Good evening. This meeting in the Board of Education for June 3rd, 2013 is now called to order. I'd like to extend a welcome to everyone present and to our television view audience. All items that will be voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. We're also streaming live on PPS's website. And we are also, the meeting will be archived on the PPS website if you'd like to view it later or want to refer somebody to something that we spoke about this evening. Just a note that Director Atkins and Knowles are absent this evening. Tonight is a night of lots of celebrations and it is so fun to get to celebrate so many of our students this evening. So, we will hear from three athletic teams and acquire and acknowledge them for their accomplishments this year. And I request that all the teams remain until the end so that we can get photos of us with all the different teams. But before we move on to that portion, I'd like to introduce the recipient of this year's board scholarships, Gabriella Lang from Jefferson High School. The board scholarship award was established in 1989 by the then-current members of the school board as a way to encourage outstanding students to return to Portland and become teachers. The fund symbolizes the founders' belief in the importance of education to our society and of the teaching to education. This year's award is $1,411 and will be sent to Gabby's College of Choice. Gabby is already at the speaker's table, and so if you could say a few words and tell us what your plans are.
Hello, thank you very much.
I know there are people behind you, but there's a camera in front of you that will get you.
Oh, hello. I just want to say thank you very much. I recognize Superintendent Carol Smith and talked on the phone with Greg. He gave me the great news. I'm just really happy to be here. In the fall of this year, I'll be attending Pacific University in Forest Grove, so this money is very appreciated, very much appreciated. I'd really like to thank one person that's in this, I mean, I'd like to thank everybody very much. Personally, I want to thank Mr. Oscar Gilson. He is the vice-principal of Jefferson High School. I've only known him for a couple of years, but this man is such, like, he's a very influential part of my life because I look to him as a role model and a leader. And I don't know how the last couple of years would have turned out if he hadn't been there giving me a thumbs up and smiling at me when I get really upset in class or at school. So, I just want to thank all of you guys very, very much and let you know that this is greatly appreciated not only by me, but my family and my friends.
So, oh wait, before you leave, wait, before you leave, don't run off, don't run off, hold on. I just want to point out that Ms. Calvert, the principal of Jefferson High School, was sitting next to her and is the teacher, Oscar?
Mr. Gilson.
Mr. Gilson, is he here?
Right there.
Just want to acknowledge you. A great example of how important it is to have great educators, great people in our schools working to provide a wide variety of role models for our students. I have a little certificate to give to you, which I'll give to you now, but hold on to it because we're going to take a photo with it later. But I also want to recommend or ask you to stick around until we get through all the recognition so we can do a photo with you, okay?
Sounds good.
Anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
I also realized, is your mom here?
No, she's not.
She's not, she wasn't able to be here.
She might be watching on the television.
Okay, she might be watching on TV. So, I just want to say congratulations to her mother. I know that I got to actually talk to her first and she was very excited and obviously very proud of her daughter. And it takes so much work to get our youth supported and all the way through school, so she is just elated and congratulations to you again. Moving on. Moving on to our next recognition, each of the teams being recognized this evening received the highest honor in the state of Oregon, winning first at the state-level competitions. We are full of champions in the state. To start this off, I want to invite the Grant High Women's Cross Country Team up front and sit.
Could you go second?
Oh, they're asking to go second. Yes, we can move you to second. Apparently, they're running here from their Latinos. So, we are going to move on to the Jefferson High School Men's Basketball Team. Now we're talking. If the Jefferson High School Basketball Team could come up and join us in the red chairs up front, that would be great.
Welcome the team and ask Ricky Allen to introduce the team.
My pleasure.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Coach Strickland, where you at?
And yet again, I'm feeling short. It's not unusual.
Right. Superintendent Smith, the board, it is my pleasure. My name is Ricky Allen, Vice Principal of Jefferson High School. Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce to you 2013 5A Jefferson High School State Champion, the Demos. Also sitting right beside me, we have PIL Coach of the Year and 5A State Coach of the Year, Mr. Pat Strickland, who's a young man who I had an opportunity to work with since the sixth grade, so I'm extremely proud of him. Let me say a few words for Mr. Strickland.
First, I want to say thanks to the superintendent and the rest of the board. This was a very special year. It's always special when you have the cameras following you the whole year and you can end up cutting the nets down at the end of the year. I want to thank all my players, want to thank the administrators at Jefferson, all the parents, because without them, none of this would have been possible. It was very special in another sense that we fought through a lot of adversity through the year. You know, players were missing due to various reasons. We maintained and stayed together and it was very special at the end. The community, just everybody, it was like a perfect ending story and we have it all on camera. Thanks for having us.
Can I ask a quick question? So, you said you worked with them since sixth grade?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean you came up through? Have you been, are you a PPS grad and now coming back to coach?
Yes, he's a state champion, he's a state champion himself at Wilson High School.
Wow, that's a great example of the tradition. And thank you for coming back and serving the community with these great guys. Congratulations, gentlemen. Before you leave us, again, I want to hope that you guys stick around so that we can get a picture with you guys, but congratulations, couldn't be proud. Oh, yeah, let's get all the, let's get all the team, I'm sorry. And then I'm going to ask for your parents to stand if you're here too after that. No, yeah, just introduce yourself.
So, go ahead, start with Coach Ba.
Assistant Coach Dale Ba.
Gabe Garrett, sophomore.
Oh, my name is Dario Popescante, I'm a sophomore.
My name is Soon Jay Edwards, I'm a junior.
Daniel Popescante, sophomore.
Quan Sod, junior, sophomore.
Victor Suresh, I'm a senior.
Hayden Hall, I'm a senior.
Steve Shrek, I'm a sophomore.
Tyler Melsey, I'm a junior.
Devonte Fashil, I'm a junior.
For those of you, for those of you on camera, there were two seniors who are obviously great role models, but the rest of it were all juniors and sophomores, so we're looking forward to next year. Great, if you guys want to have a seat real quick while we acknowledge if your parents, are some of your parents here? Could you guys stand up so we can thank you guys too? Great, thank you. Congratulations. It sounds like some of you guys might be up for three more years of championships. Great, thank you all again. Stick around, but if you guys could move to the back.
If I could, just one quick there, just wanted to acknowledge our new athletic director for the first year, Ms. Jackie Sage, brought over some great karma, so just wanted to recognize Ms. Sage, Jackie Sage.
That's great, thank you. Congratulations. All right, now I think, oh, okay. Pretty sure they're running laps around the building. We are going to move on to the Wilson Choir. If the Wilson Choir could come down and join us in the red seats. Wilson Choir, oh, here we go. They got the trophy. I told you it's coming.
Up to the blue chair? Yep. Okay. We brought the trophy to show you.
That's fantastic. You win hardware, you get to bring the hardware.
Well, thank you for this recognition. We're really proud of our Willsingers. This is quite an accomplishment. We've never placed at state and to get first is just blew us away, but the choir blows us away, so they're, they put their heart into everything they do. I have four of our seniors here, Ethan Ponroy, Sam Donnelly, Alex Huey, and Nick Huey, Diaz Huey.
That's great, congratulations. Thank you guys for joining us, and again, we hope that you guys stick around. The cross-country team has gotten me off my script. So then, other than congratulations, if we could have, are your parents, are some of your parents here? No? Oh, here we go, all right.
I'm a very proud parent, we all are.
Great, congratulations. If you guys could stay with us so we can get a picture with you, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Grant High Women's Cross Country, ready or not, you're up.
Yeah.
Hi.
Yep, this is cross-country. And there is a microphone in front of you if you want to, I don't know if you want to have them introduce themselves.
Well, I just want to say that our Grant Cross Country Team is a wild, crazy phenomenon. We had over 160 people on the team, so one out of every 10 Grant students was running for our team.
Wow.
This next fall, it'll be 200 runners, which is an insane amount, but with quantity, we also have quality. Our team this year was really built on sisterhood. They, they ran their heart and soul every meet. Throughout the season, they were just winning meets left and right. And we do have two biological sisters in the Ella Donahue and Piper Donahue, we have Rennie Kendrick and Parks Kendrick, but we have two non-biological sisters. Maddie Kozmarowski is our team captain and senior, and we also have Libby Kokas, who's just incredibly improving and helping our team immensely, so I'm really proud of her. It's been a joy, thanks.
That's great. Congratulations. Thank you, and I don't know if any of your parents were able to make it?
Yeah, some of them.
Were they? Great. If your parents are here at the cross-country team, can you either wave to us or stand up? Congratulations. I know it, I hope it doesn't defeat the purpose of having all these champions, but it's just extraordinary for us to have this many people that are working to the top of the game regardless of whether it's in athletics or at school. It's just a great example and congratulations because I know that that's a lot of miles, that's a lot of hours, it doesn't just happen, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And stay with us so that we can get a picture back in the foyer. Thank you. Now, we're up to Lincoln Women's Tennis Team. If the Lincoln's Tennis Team come on up, all right.
This is the 2013, 2012, 2011, and 2010 6A State Champions.
Wait, say that again. Start chronological. How many years is that?
Four.
Four years. Wow.
So, we're short in numbers tonight, a lot of her are taking tests, but we are huge at heart and it took a whole team to get us to qualify, to get to the tournament because we play in the Metro League, which is a pretty tough league to qualify players for, so it's especially a sweet accomplishment. And we have a lot of seniors, Ally and Katie Efnor, and Mackenzie's not, but, and Sarah Shattuck were our captains, Lily and Paige and Mackenzie.
That's great. Congratulations, and thank you. And at this level, they only play on not clay or grass, right? They play on, is it, what, hard surface?
Hard court, right.
Hard court, okay.
Although some of the girls may play in tournaments outside of school, which might have grass or clay.
I was going to ask, how many of you have played on other surfaces or are already playing on other surfaces? Okay, wow, that's fantastic. Four years running, we look forward to seeing you again next year. And I think at this point, we are, am I right? We are going to take photos. Oh, I'm sorry, and I don't know if your parents are here. Are your, any parents from, there we go, the tennis champs, parents. Congratulations. So, we're going to take some pictures back here, and while the pictures are being taken, if the principal, or principals, if the principals for the Jefferson Cluster presentation could come join in these red seats, that would be great. And we're going to take a quick break while we take some photos. Responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but we will follow up on various issues that are raised. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect, consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. And during the first two minutes, you'll have a little green light that comes on, and then when you have one minute remaining, the yellow light will come on, and then at the end of your time, the red light will come on in a little buzzer. And if you could wrap up your comments at that time, it'd be greatly appreciated, but we thank you for joining us and we appreciate your input.
Dear Superintendent Ms. Carol Smith and all Portland Public School Board members, my name is Hoi Tram, my last name is T-R-A-M. I am Vietnamese Community of Oregon Vice President of Human Resources. It is honored for me to represent for Vietnamese Community of Oregon Board and Vietnamese people to be here today. We would like to present to you some ideas. First, I would like to thank Superintendent and all you for giving us opportunity to let our voices to be heard by Portland Public School Board, and you guys really engaged with the Vietnamese community. Since then, we have meeting on May 12, 2013. Since then to present, even though only two weeks, Vietnamese community with a big effort have been collecting 1,840 signature for community members to support for Vietnamese language immersion program. So, here that, all the petitions, I brought the whole box for you.
That's great.
So, during this project, we not only collecting the petition letter, but we also educated community members about the program and get them involved. As a result of number, as you say, the signature, you know how much support we have about this program. We ask you all to consider choosing Vietnamese language for this program because first, Vietnamese is the second largest language spoken in Portland Public School and in the second language program, only after Spanish language. Next, there is a collaboration between Portland Public School and Vietnamese community approved to the last meeting on May 12, 2013, at La Vang School in Paris. The Vietnamese community also have a three big Vietnamese school to teach students to speak Vietnamese. They could be the wonderful resources for the Vietnamese language immersion program of Portland Public School. We also have many Vietnamese teacher in major area, including Portland Public School, and I am the one of them. Last but not least, thank you for listen to us and give us opportunity to raise the spirit of our community. It is phenomenal. The people gather the signature, which I present them to you today are from different groups, from the Vietnamese schools, the churches, the temples, the markets, boy scout, and even individual who walk to the neighbor houses, brought the letter to work, at school, talk to friend, and so on. Again, thank you and God bless you.
Thank you.
Is that only two minutes?
Went a little bit over, but it's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kính thưa quý vị xã học Chánh Phố Lân.
Oh, General and Lady.
Trước KHI TÔI TRIN BÀI VƯỚN ĐỀ, TÔI S sä NÊU RÁ. TÔI XIN KẾT CHÔ UY VÌ NGH MỘC CÔU TRƯỜI CÓ THẬT TRONG GIA ĐIN CỦA NGƯỜI VIỆT TÀI PHÔ LĂN.
Beginning of story, we will tell you the one real story that will in the Portland.
Một hôm người cha đọc chính tả bằng tiếng Mỹ cho con viết lên bảng.
The story we taught the human heart, beginning of the father will teach the children how to write the English in the white book.
Khi người cha đọc chữ "hope".
When the father read the hope.
Thì bé không biết viết làm sao.
The children don't know how to write.
Người cha đọc lại một lần nữa nhưng chậm hơn.
The father read again, but slowly.
Đứa con vẫn không viết được.
But the children doesn't know how to write.
Người cha liền bật mình viết chữ "hope" lên bảng.
But the father really anger and write the letter "hope" on the white book.
Tức thì đứa bé "ồ" lên.
Then the children will sao ấy.
Thì ra là "hope".
Oh, that's the children say, oh, that's the hope.
Người cha cảm thấy ngược.
The father think because of the grammar error.
Vì người cha đã đọc sai nên đứa con không viết được.
Then the grammar error, that's why, the reason the children can write.
Thưa quý vị, đó là một trong những khó khăn.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the really problem.
Mà những người cha mẹ như tôi.
Like the parent look like myself.
Và người bạn của tôi.
And my friends.
Gặp phải.
We all, we have that problem.
Chúng tôi rất muốn giúp đỡ con cái của chúng tôi.
We really want to help our children.
Trong việc học.
In the study.
Nhưng tiếng Mỹ lại không đủ để giải thích.
But however, the English, we have, we don't have enough knowledge to explain for our children.
Mà con cái chúng tôi.
The children.
Thì không đủ tiếng Việt.
Our children don't understand enough Vietnamese.
Để hiểu những gì cha mẹ giảng bằng tiếng Việt.
For the children can understand the Vietnamese for the parent can teach them by Vietnamese.
Khi biết được xã học Chánh Phố Lân.
When we hear the Portland Public School.
Mở thêm chương trình song ngữ, Việt, Mỹ, Việt.
Open the program the Vietnamese and English.
Thì bản thân tôi cảm thấy vui.
Then to, then I'm really, really happy for us.
Vì như thế, tôi có thể giúp con tôi học hành dễ dàng hơn.
Because of that, we will, we have the children can study easier than.
Từ đó giúp cho tình cảm giữa cha mẹ và con cái gần gũi hơn.
Because that's and the love between the father and children is more closer.
Phần.
Because they need to try later. Okay, I will pass it.
Phần cha mẹ thì cảm thấy tự tin đồng hành cùng con cái trong việc học.
The parent will really happy with the way to help the children to study more in the subjects.
And hỗ trợ với thầy cô giáo.
And we will support the teacher in the, in the school.
Con phần, các con của tôi.
And our children.
Thì không còn đơn độc trong việc học.
Not alone in the, in the study.
Vì đã có thầy cô giáo thứ hai.
Because the, have the second teacher, teacher.
Ở bên cạnh đó là cha mẹ mình.
Always in them, them side because of the, they are the parent.
Thưa quý vị, bản thân tôi cũng như những phụ huynh khác.
Gentlemen, like myself and all the parent.
Đều thấy chương trình này rất là tuyệt vời.
We think this program is really, really, really important.
Chúng tôi hy vọng.
We hope.
Chương trình sẽ sớm được thực hiện.
Program will early, will up, will up like early.
Và chúng tôi là những bậc cha mẹ.
We are the parent.
Sẽ hết lòng hỗ trợ với các thầy cô giáo.
Will support with the teacher.
Cùng thực hiện chương trình này một cách tốt đẹp nhất.
We, we will work together with, with this program.
Tôi xin cảm ơn rất là nhiều quý vị.
Thank you and gentlemen for listening.
Thank you.
The next, the next two speakers are Marie Nguyen and Ethan Medley.
Well, so who's, who's the first person? We can have one person just come up to the table.
Marie Nguyen?
Okay. Then we'll just have the last two speakers join at the table at the same time. Just one.
Good evening, everybody here. I'm very honored to be here to speak for Vietnamese community, for my family in four generation living in Portland, Oregon. I am the second one. Thanks God for putting me and my family in the Christlike country on earth. I'm very proud to be an American citizen, to work.
to work for Monomac County for more than twenty years. And I'm working here in the building. We thanks America and other country all over the world, giving the Vietnamese people freedom, humanity, respect, and dignity. We thanks American school, especially the Portland Public School, who recognize the diversity and their roles in society to create the English as second language, English as known native language, and other numerous community program to help and assist Vietnamese refugee relocate and become acclimate in their new homeland. Thanks Portland School Board of Education, providing the public for meeting to giving us an opportunity to serve student, family, and society better. I'm here today not to speak for only Vietnamese student, family, or culture benefit, but also for the Portland community, community as well. I would like to bring up many reason why Vietnamese should be taught in Portland Public School. I've heard many time, Asian population, population in Portland, Oregon, the Vietnamese is among the highest, preceding the Chinese population, Hispanic, or Latinos come in second overall. Everyone could probably agree that Spanish is taught in our school because their population is very high in the United States, which we could use the same reason as to why Vietnamese should be taught as well. Communication is very important. And if non-speaking Vietnamese has the opportunity to speak, to learn, to learn to speak the basic, then communication can be more efficient. Also, not just for those who don't speak Vietnamese, but for those who do speak it, but not fluently and want to advance their Vietnamese speaking skill. The second thing is Vietnamese is one of a few language in Asia that use Latin alphabet instead of symbol, was developed by French Jesus missionary, missionary who came to Vietnam in seventeenth century, which make easier to learn and interpret. Learning Vietnamese would probably have the highest success, success rate of learning. I can stop?
If you could wrap up your comments, that'd be great.
Another, another that relate to easy communication is that when people have knowledge, another language beside English is a plus in applying for a job. A lot of place in Poland either require or desire a second language, usually in Spanish or Vietnamese, and that reflect one, the population. This facility want access to bilingual employee because it will make their operation work better. One more interesting thing I want to bring up, teacher and student relationship in Vietnam. Teacher, even though they are young, enjoy great respect and prestige in Vietnamese society. In Vietnam, the student-teacher relationship retain much of the quality of a son respect for his father wisdom and of father concern for his son welfare. The respect that students show to the teacher is also evident in linguistic behavior. The term of address that students use in speaking to their teacher are the same as those to use in speaking to their parents. We strongly believe.
Can you, can you jump to the end of your comments?
Yeah, now.
Thank you.
We strongly believe and encourage Vietnamese should be taught in Portland Public School to benefit to the community of Portland as a whole. Thanks very much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ethan Medley and Andrew Kurnanen.
Thank you, PPS Board and Superintendent Smith. Ethan Medley, M E D L E Y.
Andrew Kurnanen, K U R K I N E N. We are grateful for your support in our, of our modest enrollment increase earlier this year. And, oh, we're speaking on behalf of the Portland Village School Board. And we are pleased to offer this brief update on how we have engaged the issue of student achievement and the achievement gap this year. There are many things we could highlight, but this is one that is particularly important. In his report to the district, our principal, Mr. Berg, identified the top two challenges facing our school as closing the achievement gap, particularly between African-Americans and white student populations, and increasing diversity of admissions in our family applicant pool. To address these challenges, he has intensively focused our teaching staff on several things. Data analysis, focusing on subgroup achievement gaps, equity lenses, and the alignment between internal and external assessments. Working together to dissect the student, the student achievement data from both external and internal assessment sources, considering not only the overall trends, but also class-by-class trends. And over the summer, this analysis will lead to specific strategies to put in place by the start of the next year to address the most persistent gaps. We expect to continue, we expect to continue this momentum through continued professional development of our staff. Notably, in next year, we will have a high percentage of returning staff. Retention and stability are important factors in this ongoing work that is taking place around diversity, equity, and student achievement. Virtually all full-time teachers will be supported this summer in attending Rudolph Steiner College in Sacramento, California, where they will be part of the grade-level cohorts, learning Waldorf practices and planning for next year. In addition, we hope to secure extended contract opportunities for curriculum development work and move forward to address our achievement gaps for subgroups of students. Our board is committed to addressing the achievement gap as one of our four core goals in our strategic plan. And this plan, which is currently circulating for community feedback, includes strategies to define achievement and the achievement gap and effectively measure and report student success, build our collective skills to support, to successfully address the achievement gap, strategically implement Waldorf pedagogy and other best practices, and diversify Portland Village School student body, staff, and leadership. We are proud that in the adoption of our budget, we have earmarked twenty-three thousand dollars specifically to an equity and achievement fund to support plans of action for each student currently not achieving expectations. We know that eliminating the achievement gap is a challenge we share with most other schools in the district. We are committed to demonstrating success within a Waldorf-inspired framework and look forward to continuing to partner with you to implement best practices. We've captured a few of our other highlights of our year on a written update that I'll share with you at the end of these remarks. Before I leave, I'd like to introduce Andrew Kurnanen, who will be our president next year. Andrew is a former PPS teacher and now runs his own business. Thank you for your time this evening and for your service to this board. We extend our thanks to outgoing Director Sergeant and Gonzalez for your dedication to all of the PPS students. We look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, we have Scott Bailey.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Smith. My name is Scott Bailey, B A I L E Y. I'm with our Portland, our schools. Want to make a few brief comments. It was a busy week last week for us with a number of major meetings going on. One of them was the, the sort of big tent meeting around the facilities vision process. I want to focus on two things from that meeting. One, there was broad agreement that the outreach leading up to taking input in that process was really fabulous and reached out to a lot of folks who are often not included in PPS processes. And I want to say big thumbs up on that. When, when PPS engages in that kind of outreach, it really builds trust in the community and leads to better decisions down the road. I want to contrast that a little bit with the Roosevelt Design Advisory Group. The recruitment for that yielded only a handful of applicants from the community. OPUS and the Roosevelt Campus Improvement Committee have met with PPS staff and offer to help with improving that outreach in the future. And we're confident we can do that together. It would have been better to do that upfront so that we have a better process going forward. The same could be true, we'll, we'll wait and see how the Franklin Process is turning out. A second thing takeaway from that facilities vision process and what the community said to Portland Public. While it was a facilities vision process, embedded in that was, were a lot of comments about educational vision. And I don't think it was lost on anybody in the room that the, what was stated in terms of educational vision by community members was almost directly opposed to the direction of federal and state policy, current policy. Thought it was pretty interesting. Thanks for your time and your service.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is, we get to hear another installment of our high school cluster presentations. These presentations featuring a different school cluster each month allows the board to conduct a deeper dive on milestone data at the school level. We've allocated one hour for this item, thirty minutes presentation, and thirty minutes questions from the board. Superintendent Smith, do you want to get us started?
Yes, and firstly, just like to extend a welcome to all of our cluster leaders from Jefferson Cluster and introduce Suzanne Higgins, our chief academic officer, who will introduce the regional administrators and do more individual introductions of all of our principals. So Suzanne.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be joined tonight by the leaders of the Jefferson Cluster Schools and their regional administrators, beginning with the K eight Regional Administrator, Antonio Lopez. And Trip Goodall will also join him, our director of high schools. Thank you.
Good evening. Co-chairs Belial and Gonzalez, directors, assistant representative, and superintendent. It is indeed a pleasure and honor to be here in front of you to present the Jefferson Cluster. This is a group of amazing administrators that are working very hard in terms of giving our students the education that they deserve, to provide a safe and nurturing environment. We know we have a lot of work to do, so, you know, we are, we are indeed working very hard in terms of establishing those systems and interventions to, to move our students to the level that they deserve to be. So I'm going to have the principals of the administrators of each school introduce themselves and also tell you about the things that are happening at their schools. So we're going to start with, okay.
Oscar Gilson, middle college director, vice principal at Jefferson High School.
Margaret Calvert, principal at Jefferson High School.
Hi, Rebecca Torres. I'm the principal at Beach School. Just to tell you guys a little bit about our school, we have over six hundred students. We're very proud of our dual-language immersion program. Currently, we have eleven sections going strong. Some of the neat things about our school is we're really big on the walking and biking to month, uh, to school month. And we're anticipating winning the award the third year in a row this year. We have over ninety percent participation. We have a bike fairy who leaves little treats on the, on the bicycles and that offers hot chocolate in the mornings. Some of the other things that we're really proud of at our school is that we are a right-brain immersion school as well. So we are, we had over six residents that came to our school and a hundred percent of our classrooms participated in those things as well.
Conrad Hurdle, principal of Oakley Green School.
Joe Galati, current principal at Chief Joseph Elementary.
Robin Morrison, principal over at Woodlawn. And I'll just take a couple minutes to highlight some of the things that we've been doing at Woodlawn. And I'm going to start with talking about our discipline data. I don't know if you're going to look at our current data, but what, when I look at the dashboard, it has significantly, significantly decreased. And I believe that it's because we're in our third year of being a PBIS school and we have really implemented the theory and we're going to take it to the next step. And so we're really excited about that. And then the other thing that I think is really important is through the enrollment and balancing Jefferson process, our parents came together and we had some very strong voices that came from our community that really supported Woodlawn and kind of came out of the woodwork, and I'm really proud of that. And that includes our PTA board, which has tripled in size over the last year, and I'm really excited about that. One of the things that they did just last Friday is we put on a fair called It Takes a Community. And probably about a hundred and fifty, two hundred people showed up to that. And there was a dunk take and the good fairy from the northeast came, that would be me, who was dressed as a fairy. And it was put on totally by our community. And our community came out and it was really excited, exciting to see. But I think the last thing that I want to illustrate is we just received word from the state of Oregon that our comprehensive achievement plan was accepted without any revisions. And except for, except for a budget piece. But overall, I mean, that was like one little item. And I can tell you is that's our school improvement plan. And it was very difficult to do because most of them were sent back for either mini or major revisions. And so we've also had exemplary in several areas, and so we're really excited about that. And that's been a whole community process. So those are three things that I'd like to share with y'all, so.
So good evening, everyone. I'm LaShawn Lee, the proudest principal in PPS, the Fabian pre-K A school. It's a pleasure to be here today, just to brag about our school and our community. Actually, we have a PowerPoint.
Do we have a?
Yes. Thank you. So building our community together is our theme this year with the help of our parents, students, teachers, and valuable partnerships. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Jen, our assistant principal, to give you a little bit of information about our students.
Hi, I'm Jen McCauley. I'm the AP at Fabian. Giving you a quick overview of Fabian's school. We have four hundred and sixty-two students today. That changes, that's a running joke in our building. We've actually increased thirty-five students since October first. Our numbers have been as high as four seventy-five. We bounce around quite a bit. We have seventy-one percent of our students are students of color, which we're very proud of. It's something we actually really celebrate in our building. We have a hundred and fourteen mid-level learners and three hundred and forty-eight pre-K through fifth-grade students. We're seventy-nine percent free and reduce lunch. Fourteen percent ESL, fifteen percent sped, and we have a seven percent of our tag population. We do have our tentative testing results back from two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, this school year. Our biggest accomplishment is in eighth grade, if you look down in the yellow. We had a fourteen percent increase, a fourteen-point increase in eighth-grade reading scores and a twelve percent increase in eighth-grade math scores. And we are really proud of that. So one of the things we're going to highlight today is an iPad donation we received. So in February, we were at a Concordia event honoring Governor Victor Atia. And Hotchok, the director, Ed Fields, was one of the presenters. And the idea had been to try to fundraise a little bit for some technology for Fabian. We have one working laptop cart for a school of four hundred and sixty-two students, which is hard when you have testing, then you have no technology. When Ed Fields walked up to the podium, he said, oh, we need to, you know, earn money for a hundred and twenty iPads. And you know what? We've got it. And everyone just kind of looked around and said, what? He and his company purchased all one hundred and twenty iPads right there on the spot and donated them to Fabian's school. So what you see in the pictures right there is Dr. Seuss Day was our big rollout. There's LaShawn with all hundred and twenty iPad boxes in front of her, very excited. We kicked it off by having our youngest learners, our four- and five-year-olds, sitting in the cafeteria in a big assembly with a seventh grader, learning how to read books on the iPad. And so they were reading Dr. Seuss books on the iPad. We've used the iPads for instructional reasons. Our middle, mid-level learners have recorded severe weather forecast reports on it. We've used Khan Academy. Our youngest have practiced reading fluency and changed their voices and got to hear themselves back. We've used it for classroom management reasons. All in all, it's really revolutionized the way our teachers are teaching.
On April the twenty-seventh, Comcast adopted our school and provided just a little spring cleaning, much-needed spring cleaning on campus, as well as offering a technology class to our Jefferson Cluster families. Over three hundred Comcast employees volunteered and dedicated an entire weekend day to weeding the garden, painting, repainting our basketball backboards, and built us a beautiful welcome Fabian sign. To top, to top this day off, Comcast gave away two iPads and donated a check for twenty-five thousand dollars to Fabian. And I mean, that was the best birthday present, my birthday, ever. to Fabian, and I mean, that was the best birthday present, my birthday, ever. So we're also excited, as you all know, about our deep partnership with Concordia University, our neighbor's just 102 steps away. As you know, Concordia has the largest college of education in the state, over 1,700 students on campus, and 250 of their student teachers, practicum students, and interns in our building within a given school year. Thanks to our voters, Fabian and Concordia will embark, embark on a joint venture to rebuild our campuses together. We're ready, we're building, and more to come. Thank you.
I'm Kim Patterson, and I'm Principal of Martin Luther King Junior School, and we have a wonderful student and parent community at Martin Luther King Junior School, including many families who choose King because of its historic, the school. We are especially proud of our implementation of our school improvement grant, and this upcoming school year will be the third year of that $2 million grant. There are three strategies in our grant that I would really like to remind the board of, because those grants are meant to seed the district with some ideas that might transform practice across the district. So the first piece that we're extremely proud of is our extended school year, so feel free to stop by in July. All teachers at King School and all students will be deeply entrenched in learning in the month of July, and we, we call that month an extra scoop, and we really encourage you to think about a balanced calendar for Portland Public Schools. We believe that the learning loss that happens in the summer is needless, and we would encourage you to make that a priority. The second piece that we're very proud of is King School, over the last three years, has become a PYP authorized school and a middle-years program, International Backglory at Authorized School as well. And we invested in that strategy to provide Level 2 and 3 training for our teachers, and at King School, we like to think that teachers are creators, and the SIG grant has given us additional time for planning and planning constructivist and inquiry-based curriculum for our students. And it's a reminder that at schools where there is a high number of students of color and students of poverty, that they are usually the least likely to receive that kind of constructivist curriculum, and so we're really pleased with those efforts, and we believe that our academic gains are part of that effort. The third piece has been that from the very beginning, the arts were part of our achievement strategies, and last spring, we were selected as one of the eight turnaround art schools in the nation, and usually people want to ask us about Sarah Jessica Parker or things like that, but really, we like to remind everyone that we, we had really simple strategies, like having African dance and Ghanaian culture for all of our students, and we really see the joy and the pleasure that the arts give our students. And so one of the other reminders is that nationally and in the Portland metro area, it's students of color and low-income students that sometimes have the least of the specials and enrichments in their schools, and we really are committed to that. And so in this last year, we hope you stop by and check it out, and, and we really are, our academic gains have been noticeable, so thank you.
I am Gina Ralletto, I'm the Assistant Principal at Vernon School, and I'm here with my Principal, Tina Acker. She's right down here at the end. Thanks for letting us come to present. I'm going to go ahead and start off, and then I'll pass it on, but I think one of the things that I wanted to share is that we're coming to the end of our second year with our transition that we had with our additional students from the Wrigler community. And it's been a great achievement with the students. It presented a lot of unique challenges, but what was great was seeing our Vernon community be so welcoming of all the families and the students, and I think it led to a lot more, a lot more vision for our community and what we meant to be, what it meant to be, to be a community. And so it definitely was something that we learned a lot from in welcoming those students and making them a part of Vernon. And in that process, too, we wanted to thank the board and the district for continuing to support us through those two years, both through resources and encouragement of additional things that we could bring for our students while those students were there. And, and I think our cluster learned a lot, too, in regards to the processes of bringing those communities together, even though it was a smaller dosage of it, but it was over 100 middle-school students that we had acquired, and we're, we're sad to see them go. And, and so it'll be ending here for them at, at the end of the school year. So I'll pass this on to Tina Acker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tina Acker, and I am the proud principal at Vernon School, and this is my fifth year serving as principal at Vernon and the Vernon community. There's a couple of things that I'm really excited about and pleased about in terms of our progress over this year. Our equity work has been one of those pieces. It was really important for us to move forward as with the district's mission and focus on equity and how that impacts our schools, our, both our students and our families and our staff. And so at the end of the year last year, we formed our equity team, and we made some plans to dedicate our two-hour late start professional development time to the equity work. And it's been, we've been everywhere across the compass and experienced discomfort and speaking our truth and going through and learning each other and getting to know kind of who we are and what we bring to the table, and I think that's really important as a starting place. The other thing that's been really nice is that our, we have a group of parents in our community that had expressed the desire to engage in the conversations and learn about what that means and what that impact is, and how as parent, a parent community, they can support the work that we're doing. And so I'm really happy to share that we had our initial parent meeting focused on equity a few weeks ago, and we had a follow-up meeting that was an affinity group. One of the things that we've been working on is ways to engage all of our community. We saw that we needed to do some things a little bit differently to engage other people in our community, and so we had an affinity group meeting for our Black and Brown families that went very well a week ago, and we will have another meeting, so our second meeting with our families, with everyone together before we leave for the end of the year, and that will happen next week. So I'm really excited that we're getting deep into the work, and we know that it's not always easy. Those conversations can be challenging at times, but I think, times, but I think it's essential that we engage in that dialogue, especially if we're going to impact what happens for all of our students. So that's been something that I've been really proud of this year. The other piece, piggybacking off of Kim and the focus on IB, Vernon is the second school in the Jefferson Cluster that is an authorized international backglory at school. I feel like my kids are rocking IB. They've shown in many ways that they are embracing what it means to focus on inquiry-based instruction, about caring about others in the community, what it means to be a citizen, and think about others and not just themselves. And so I'm seeing lots of evidence of the beauty of what it means to be an IB school. So our school is authorized in our primary years program, and we're prepared for authorization. We're very confident that we will achieve the authorization for our middle-years program. That will happen in the fall of next school year, but the work that needed to be done in order to be prepared for authorization is completed. We actually took a group of students that focused on community and service to a recent leadership meeting in our district, and so I had students presenting in front of over 200 administrators, and their focus was on the things that they chose as projects, and, and emphasis on getting out into the community and helping others and what that means. And so they did a beautiful job. We also had a couple of students that shared projects that they, they presented that were tied to our partnership with the East Portland Rotary. We are very grateful for our PTA and Rotary and the work that they're doing in our school to bring more art and music into our school. The PTA and the Rotary have made a three-year commitment to fund our halftime music teacher, and so the Rotary has donated $12,500 for the past couple of years, and next year will be the third year. But in addition to that, they show up to our building, so they are showing what happens when people reach out and take time and invest in our kids, and it means a lot to us. We have a group that meets once a month as a committee, and then in addition to that, they are volunteering in the school, working with our students, with our Passport Club, and other activities. We've got community people that are coming in, talking about business opportunities and options that are available to our students, so they see the reality of what, what that, what their futures could be. And so it's really important for us that we maintain that partnership, but that we celebrate that and we express to the board the importance of continuing to build partnerships like the partnership that we have with our East Portland Rotary. In addition, one of the things that we did as IB schools, there are four in our district, we got together with our teachers, it was one of the things that they asked for was time together with each other. And so instead of, if you're a specialist and you're the only one in your building and you're doing the work in isolation, we brought our staffs together, and so all of our primary years teachers were at one building, I hosted one building, and Kim hosted the other, and so Saban, Skyline, Vernon, and King, we all got together a couple times this year for some professional development with all of our schools as IB schools, and there was really value in doing that. It's something that we want to continue doing into next year, and so we appreciate that. We have had support from the district, and there's evidence that there's that continued support for something that I think is extremely valuable for students at my school. So we've been very grateful for the support that you all have shown to us, and we're looking forward to continuing the work, so thank you very much.
Ms. Chen, before you, before you get started, I just want to let everybody know, you got about five more minutes for the staff presentation part.
All right, I'll hurry.
And I'm not trying to rush you, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm Molly Chen, Principal at Boise Elliott Humboldt. This year has been a highlight. It's been an amazing journey. So about, you know, a year ago, at this time, we began the process of a merger with Boise Elliott and Humboldt, and I think we, we were very well-prepared for the work ahead due to the work that we'd done as a Beacon School for five years. We, I think it was so meaningful for both staffs and for families, because we were able to capitalize really on the experience of being a Beacon School, gone, gone through the equity work and what that really meant to our families. We embraced it as a chance to really examine social justice issues and displacement of families. Our theme for the year is Place Race and Justice. We had a curriculum camp this summer that was funded by a grant with Oregon Writing Project, where 14 teachers from both staffs came together and developed units around Place Race and Justice at developmentally appropriate levels, pre-K through 8. The teachers have been teaching those lessons in those units throughout the year. We got together in August as a combined staff and went on the urban housing tour and really continued, you know, the exploration of displacement and what that means for our families in Portland, especially in the Albina neighborhood. And it, it was just a great springboard for the year ahead. We started our year with a, a big celebration. We had a staggered start, so half the kids came on the first day of school, half the kids came on the second, and then we had a huge assembly, barely all fitting in the cafeteria with our new Boise Elliott Humboldt t-shirts. So the year, it started out wonderful, and it really has been a great experience. What I like to say is Humboldt's the best thing that's happened to Boise Elliott. I get emotional, sorry. But the, the passion and the commitment from teachers and staff and community and children has just really demonstrated the resilience of a community. And it, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm emotional anyways because you know what's coming at the end of this year. But in addition to that, one of the big highlights for this year has been our STEM partnership with the Portland Metro Partnership. We and Jefferson were the two schools from Portland that were asked to join as transformational schools, and another, you know, it's, it's this great interconnection of initiatives. STEM really adds to the relevance and rigor and relationship and realness, which is the transformational form, or framework of the care work through, through equity. We, from the STEM work, we were able to hire a full-time STEM TOSA, and she's done an awesome job of just spreading the word, spreading the knowledge, getting everyone in the building using inquiry notebooks, and the science has just become a part of our life at Boise Elliott Humboldt, which is really exciting, at a much higher level than it had been. In addition to that, we became partners with the Department of Fish and Wildlife through our STEM work, but also through the Equity Department, Equity Department with Portland. So Melissa Gah and Lulunzo Poe kind of facilitate, facilitated it for us. This, the Office of Civil Rights from the Department of Fish and Wildlife came and asked for a school to participate, and they recognized us. And so we developed this amazing partnership that is, just has been life-changing for kids. They brought a fish tank with 150 salmon eggs, and as an entire building and community, we watched our eggs, our salmon eggs develop into a little fry, and every grade level came to visit the eggs and watch the development. We kept an ongoing video journal, photography journal, kids, you know, recorded everything in their inquiry journal. We had biologists from the hatchery, little white salmon come and demonstrated some great lessons with the kids. At the end, they got to actually dissect, you know, salmon, not our salmon, but big salmon, the ones that already made the trip, the ones that already made the trip back. So, but, and then they sent three charter buses to pick up all the 4th and 5th grade and families, lots of grandparents that were, you know, fishermen came, it was wonderful. And then we went to the hatchery and released our salmon. The kids were emotional, crying, writing letters to their salmon, just, it was, it was darling. It was just an amazing experience. And we've just kind of formed this great partnership now with the department. Ugh, last week, they brought out the lamphrey, and they're not nearly as cute as the salmon. So I don't know if you know about lamphrey, but they are, but the kids were so excited about these creatures, and we have, and next year, they're coming in September to develop the backyard, or actually, it's the schoolyard habitats program. So it's, it's been a really exciting adventure. And then Senator Merkley came to visit Boise Elliott Humboldt because, to kind of highlight the work that we had done, that we have done with the STEM, and he was dropping a bill at the same time in support of funding for STEM, so that was really exciting. And then just this last Saturday, we had STEM Saturday at Boise Elliott Humboldt, which was, oh my gosh, it was an amazing event. There were about 60 kids and families that came from about 8 to 1, and we had Solve and Saturday Academy and Mad Science and FIRST that came and did just great interactive hands-on science projects. The kids were so engaged, and it was really exciting. So what I can say is, you know, the, it started out as kind of, you know, a challenge as far as the consolidation and the merger, but with the passion and commitment of the community, it became an amazing, amazing experience and will continue to be. And, and really just interconnecting the initiatives of equity and STEM and the social justice, justice issues. So, thank you.
So after that, and being the last one, I will be very brief. Evelyn Flowers, Assistant Principal at Boise Elliott Humboldt, and I think for me, you've heard some of the details about what makes our building so magical, and there's many more things that could be said as well, but for me, being a part of the Jefferson Cluster has been such an honor, because no matter what challenges we are asked to address, everyone in our cluster rises to that occasion. So it is a very proud moment to be sitting here before you. I realize now that it's a little unfair to ask principals to speak about the things they love the most about their building and then cut them off. We're at time, so if you want to say some final comments, and then I think we've just, we've used too much time, so Jefferson doesn't get to go. I'm just, I'm just kidding, but if, if we could wrap it up quickly.
Can I just ask for a couple of minutes for, for Conrad and Joe?
Thank you, everyone. Conrad Hurdle, again, Principal of Oakley Green School. And as I think about what to say tonight, I can summarize some of my comments in three words. Oakley Green is an engaging, inspiring, and winning school. I say engaging because we have a great after-school program, Schools United Neighborhoods Program called SUN, and they do some amazing work with us. called SUN, and they do some amazing work with our students. We have intramural sports throughout the year, but also this Thursday and Friday, we're going to have a great drama performance. And so all of you are invited to come. The performance is called Words, and it's going to happen Thursday and Friday at seven o'clock in our auditorium. And Words is a play about words and how words can hurt. You know, my students, they're very creative. Some of the words are good, some of the words are questionable. But, you know, just helping them understand the power of your words. But this has been great. This is totally a grassroots effort. We have a great drama teacher. Parents work with her to help her out and the program is going to be stellar. So if you can come, please come. Also, I want to share that Ocley Green is a very inspiring program as well. This year, we really focus on empowering the students to have a love for reading, also their homes as well. So we work with our teachers around a book study called The Book Whisperer. And one of the ambitious goals we have this year is for all of our fourth through eighth grade students to read 40 books this year. So if you come into our building, you'll see a star around our hallways representing a book that the children have read. We've also have established some outstanding partners, the Children's Book Bank and also Bazillion Books. These partners have worked with us in providing books so parents and students can select books to add to their home libraries. That's very important that all of our homes are literate and making sure our homes have the literacy in them. We want to make sure that we're empowering our parents to help us, but we also want to help our parents too. So that's been a great connection. And last, I just want to say, Ocley Green, we're a winning school. We have a great program called Mesa for the television audience. That stands for Mathematical Engineering and Science Achievement Program. This is a STEM program that's been around for a long time. Mesa is really there to counter any injustices that are out there for underrepresented students. The whole premise of the program is to make sure that underrepresented students have the science, mathematical, and technology background to compete in college or in the workforce. So I'm so proud Mesa's been around at Ocley Green for a long time. During May 10th, we had a great showing. There was a competition at Portland State University. I'm very proud to say we won nine medals that day. In 2009, we were the national championship, national champions for Mesa. So we have a strong history in math and science at Ocley Green with this program. We have some great coordinators, Esther Romero, but now we also have Mrs. Moon that's in the audience as well as our Mesa coordinator. So those are some words I want to describe Ocley Green, and thank you. I'm going to pass it on to my partner, Joe. I just want to say, moving the schools together, Ocley Green and Chief Joseph, as we merge together, it's been a very powerful experience working with Mr. Galati and making that transition happen as smooth as possible.
As I've listened tonight to everyone that has spoken from the Jefferson cluster, there's nothing but deep pride that I have for my colleagues because they're able to focus in on those special, unique qualities of each of their buildings. Tonight, I want to share with you where Chief Joseph is. We are the jewel of the north. And as we move through the journey of merging two buildings, I would ask that prior to that, you come out and visit the building and you come out and see the mural that we are so proud of our Native American Chief Joseph Nez Perce. You'll see our garden and you'll see a huge mural that truly speaks volumes to the ethnic breakdown of our building. I ask that when you come out and see it, you look into his eyes. Two weeks ago, we had our honoring of him, and I wish to say thank you to our keynote speaker, Matt Morton, who came out and presented. And we were gifted with the presence of Chief Joseph's great-granddaughter, Mrs. Britton. And for her to sit there and for our kids to be able to meet her and be near her and to see an elder is probably the most moving thing that our kids will ever remember about that. Yes, we have tremendous teachers. Yes, we have a tremendous community, but we have incredible young students that continue to shine and demonstrate their skills. And as we merge our two buildings together, I have nothing but praise for our parents that have worked so hard to make this merger a reality. And before I leave, as you always know, you never come to Chief Joseph without me bearing a gift for you. So thank you for inviting us here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to share the great things that we have in our buildings. And do not lose the opportunity to come out so I can brag about that gorgeous mural. So if we could go ahead and get started, we're running a little bit behind. Thank you.
Well, I have the honor of presenting another principal, high school principal, Margaret Calvert. Margaret is an outstanding principal who is an enthusiastic ambassador for the Middle College Program. She believes in Jefferson and she believes in what can happen at Jefferson and believes in every student that walks through that door. She's reflective, she's insightful, and she's determined. You know, some things you didn't know about Margaret. She's a trained economist. She was a Big Ten varsity crew member at Wisconsin. She was an outstanding, I went to University of Washington, no, sorry. She was an outstanding math teacher and an outstanding coach of women athletics while she was in PPS. Most importantly, she's an outstanding instructional leader and she's an outstanding leader of equity, Margaret Calvert.
So, good evening. I realize we're behind, so I'm just going to do the front slide and the back slide and call it good. Really not, but just a quick, quick move here. Two years ago, we started on a journey called the Middle College Program. I don't have to take you through the history of this, but the design principles were simple. Take what was working in the building and take it to scale. And the two foundational partnerships that we're working were with Self-Enhancement Incorporated and with PCC. Then we said, okay, wrap that around with building and supporting the successful academic programs that were currently in the building at the time, which were the Health Sciences, Biotechnology Program, the Dance Program, and Digital Media. So, beginning in the fall of 2011, we said, okay, can we make, we set out not only to transform individual student lives, but actually to transform the community. And the goal is an ambitious one, to be certain. And you're looking at a cohort of people that are working towards the same vision and that this is not something that starts at high school. This is a K-12 vision. And every single piece of pride and program that is in place in the K-8s is foundational to the success of the program at Jefferson. One of the key things that we brought into the building was our freshman academy. And this, the students travel in a cohort like many other high schools, but probably the level of collaborative work that happens with our teachers is just at a dramatically higher level. We have a freshman academy coordinator who is a talented teacher, is also a tremendous taskmaster, and sets agendas, organizes professional development, and supports the teachers. A fairly prominent principal from Grant High School named Toni Hunter once told me that the most important thing was to have people that loved freshmen and that they taught them willingly. We now have a group of teachers in the building that are clamoring to teach in the freshman academy. They want to help support students, make that bridge to high school. So I think in Toni's honor, I hope that she is listening and she feels proud about that. We also made a commitment to say that we were building a program for the students that were currently there, and we were not looking to see success of a school be based on different students. The commitment was to transform within the community itself. And so what we were looking at is, you know, we track closely, are the demographics changing and what does that look like? For the most part, they've stayed pretty stable with, we're seeing a rise in actually the number of academic priority students who enter our building. And what that means is we have a fairly tall task. The task is to change the trajectory of their learning and to get them accelerated and ready to go so that they are able to take not only advantage of the Middle College Program by the time they're juniors, but to successfully complete classes and coursework there. The investment in our freshman communities and our freshmen is absolutely critical to making sure that the kids make the transition to high school and then get on track to really accelerate and change the trajectory of their learning. So our demographics have remained stable over the last four years with our freshmen. This is probably the most significant graph, and I went through and I made it this morning and then I went back and I looked at it again. And then I looked at it again this afternoon and I said, maybe the numbers are wrong. So when we look at, if you think about in 2010 and 11, this is when the board made the decision to do high school redesign, right? There was a chance that Jefferson would close. And when we look at what has happened since then, I believe we're on the right track. So when we look at freshman enrollment in the four years since that, the last two years, we've been just slightly over 127 incoming freshmen. Next year's freshman group is at 160. When we look at sophomores, when we look at sophomores and juniors and seniors, what we see is it is stable. So when I look at last year's freshman, 127, there's 127 sophomores. And when I look at two years ago, there were 130 or 127 freshmen, there's 127 soon-to-be juniors. So we're not seeing mobility in the same way we've had in the past, and this is tremendous beginning. So the class of 2015 is the inaugural class of the Middle College, their current sophomores. And we're seeing that they stayed. They're not going, they're staying, and they're working through the program. When we look at students with the 10th grade milestones, we're looking at a progression of how students are attending school. We see dramatic increases in the amount of time students are in the classroom. We realize we can have, the most important thing is to have a skilled teacher in front of students. The second most important thing is to have the students actually in the classroom with the teacher, right? So we've made a lot of focus on what, and attention to what that looks like. In the last three years, our 10th grade milestone data has increased dramatically. So our current seniors entered their sophomore years about with just a little over one in four being on track to graduate. Our current sophomores, well over 50% did, and the district overall was looking at 70. Our goal is not to see 5% gains. We don't want 3% gains. We want to beat the district, and we know we're chasing that. And as we get better, that pushes that bar up, which means we're going to be chasing it forever. But chase it, we will. So the 10th grade milestone comparisons, on the right is what PPS has done overall in the last three years. So it's been about a, it's been 63, 63, then 70. So on the left is what has happened at Jefferson over the past three years. If we look at what happened with the performance of black students, again, Jefferson is on the left. We've seen that actually our black students are outperforming the district overall. That is not to say that we don't have work to do. When we look at our performance of our Hispanic students, although they're increasing, it's not increasing fast enough and we certainly are lagging. And when we look at our performance of our white students, we are getting closer to what the district is doing overall. Here are the pieces, right? We have success and challenges, and that's what everybody has described. And I selected these slides, these pictures for a reason. So earlier today, you heard from our championship basketball team. And this is about collective team effort. And it's a school of champions and a school of pride are two of the monikers that are of Jefferson. And it's critical that it's both happen. And when you see the level of teamwork and what happened with this group of young men that got documented in a documentary that they're actually previewing tonight at Jefferson, it's tremendous that you could not have written a better ending to a story if you tried. To come really from nowhere to ending up with a state championship is just a testament to hard work and fortitude. And the guys lost a lot of games prior to winning. So this was not just like right out of the gate saying it was going to be successful. The middle picture is when we were at our Sustainability Fair, we had Angelicia Frierson, who is our student body president, was named a Gates Millennial Scholar. And it just so happened that Senator Ron Wyden was there that day. So we said, hey, why don't you come on up and shake her hand? And he actually offered her an internship on the spot. So I had told her, that's one you say yes to. And she's actually going to go to Howard University, which is a pretty darn good fit for being an intern for Senator Wyden. So these are about individual and collective successes. And then the last picture I have here is of one of our longstanding symbolic challenges. This is the wall. It is the fence that surrounds Jefferson High School. So in a 12-year effort to get the fence down at Jefferson, we finally got part of it down. This is going to be dedicated on Wednesday to a visionary in the North Northeast Portland neighborhood named Carl Flipper, who has worked for, literally, this was a 12-year. I had the initial architectural drawings in my office. 12 years ago, this project was started, and we will complete it, at least the frontage part of it, in this coming time. It's about strategic investment. The wall represents so much. It's about access. It's about allowing people in to a space that should be about education. It is about making sure that we are allowing our students and access and the community access to a school that makes it the center of the community and what should be one of the most highlighted education zones in the city. It is tremendous that this has happened. It is a start. What has followed up with this is potentially a new track, which has followed up with this is potentially a new field. And all I can say is that this is more than symbols. This is about tangible, visible investment in a community that starts to lead to transformation. So we're starting to see families say that this is a place that we want to go to school. We're starting to see that we're getting academic success in a way that we haven't realized before. And I think the final piece is, it's not that it's easy. It's every day, very hard work, very dedicated staff to make the gains, and we don't always get it everywhere. So what we see is a lot of effort and focus on supporting our freshmen and our seniors and a little bit of hope that it all works out in the middle. And the reality is, we just do not have enough resources at this point to provide support all the way through all four years at a level that would really get us to the point where we're saying, we're not providing students opportunity or access to things, but we're guaranteeing success. We're not there yet, but we're getting closer. And I think that the pieces that we have in place are starting to be foundational. The last piece today that I just wanted to share, I went back, at some point, our yearbook advisor put some quotes up around the building. And I'll just read it to you. It's from Hopkins Jenkins. He was the first principal at Jefferson. So this is from 1909, and he, this is as true today as it was in 1909. So he was a fairly longstanding principal, which in the history of Jefferson, most recently, has not been the case. So as a good friend of mine said to me tonight, I hope you're there for 31 years. I don't know about that, but we'll see. So the piece that he said was, Jefferson is not the work of any one person. It is a result of the cooperative efforts of a devoted faculty and loyal student body. You built it better than you realize. The ideals of Jefferson's formative period, which continues right now into the 2013, we're still in a formative period, have been carried on by every class. You are Jefferson and Jefferson is you, and it is something that is as true today as it was in 1909. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I'm glad that you didn't go from the first slide to the last slide. There was too much good data in there. Thank you. With that, an opportunity for board to ask questions or discuss.
So first of all, thank you so much. It was inspiring to hear from each and every one of you, and you can feel the Jefferson pride come through, so really appreciate it. I want to go on a very positive note, which is when I looked at the milestone data, in particular for King. I'm looking at the one that really stood out in terms of the jumps in achievement. And when you're looking at the third grade milestones for black children, 42% to 91%. For Hispanic children, 11% to 86%. 100% of white students, all students, 33% to 91%. Amazing. Kim, you talked about three different things that you're really proud of in the school. And I'm kind of trying to understand if there's one in particular. And I don't know if there could be, so let me just remind people, it was the extended school year. And it was the IB. And it was the arts turnaround program and the fact that you had the SIG grant. But I don't know if there's like any one thing that kind of.
And I, and I think that's the problem is often.
Before, before you answer, can we get you a microphone? I think there's, I want everybody to be able to hear what you're replying.
You know, often we're asked to isolate down to the one thing. And there have been a lot of end of the, end of the year surveys for chess for success and. And what I would say is, I really believe that it was all of those consistent efforts. But I feel very strongly about the way that the extended summertime has really decreased that gap. And, and I, I think the teachers would probably rank that very high because what we know is that particular students fall further behind every summer. And so I, I, I think that we would offer that up, but it really is hard to extract what it was. And just the joy from the arts. You know, one of the things that we've talked a lot about across the cluster and right now in some of our data meetings is just the curriculum sometimes, that's the choice when students are struggling, that has been the choice over the past 10 years. And so I, I can't say enough, Tina and I, I think the IB curriculum, and I think it's similar to what Molly says about STEM, but the curriculum where teachers are planning that and there's creativity and it's a constructivist approach. So I really can't take out one. I know one thing I didn't mention though, that I'm excited about is that we are partnering with Portland State University's Masters in Fine Arts Program in, in a small amount of the King facility and some of our building. And really trying to make sure that, that we're good stewards of this grant money that we had. And so, so that we have extended partnerships and arts partnerships.
Can I just follow up on that? Cause I'm, I'm interested in your comments about the extended school year. And with the grant funds, you were able to add that instruction. So it's not a balanced calendar in the sense that you're spreading the school, the same number of days out over a different schedule. But actually you're, you're adding how much time in the summer?
So we're adding three weeks, 12 days. We have Fridays off. And so, you know, another tribute to Toni Hunter is, I think a decade ago, she sent me to Bardstown, Kentucky to look at a balanced calendar. And so in a time of scarce resources, a balanced calendar allows you to decrease that summer gap. And so in, in reality, you would spread those, those vacations and breaks across the year. And net, students would never have a break longer than four, five or six weeks. That's about when you see that decrease in learning. In times where you can invest again, districts like Bardstown, Nashville, during those breaks, there's often intercessions for middle schoolers and high schools, so, so high school students where maybe there's a three-week break and a student that's struggling in algebra can have a week intercession, credit retrieval. Maybe they have a D in algebra and they move it to a passing grade. And so if we're moving from a time of economic scarcity to a time where we can gain back, that a balanced calendar can provide all kinds of opportunity. I know I hear other schools in Portland say that they would be interested in such a thing, but it really has to be a metro effort. And I have said many times, we're fortunate to have a superintendent that has that kind of metro lens. I mean, it would be an amazing thing.
I, I appreciate those comments because I, I think that as we all hope that the economy improves and that there is more money for schools, and that's something to be really thoughtful about. How do you invest the additional funds? Maybe you don't necessarily reduce your class size, maybe you extend your year so that you have kids in school longer because that's where you're going to close the gap. So I, I think that's something that, that the district should really be thinking about going forward.
So I guess this, this presentation for me is less about the business and more about the inspiration, which I, I feel so deeply when our principals and our parents and our staff and our kids from the Jefferson Cluster Talk. And I, I feel it again tonight. So thank you all for the, the information that you've shared and the, the, really the, the inspiration, but also the inspiration that's really, that to me is wrapped in this value of kindness. I think that's something that's really, it's important to me and I think it's something that, that we see in the Jefferson Cluster. But I also want, one of the things that, that really, this last year, when we went through the Jefferson Cluster enrollment balancing that we'll be talking about a little bit later, getting up on that. One of the things that I found was especially fun and neat about the cluster were the, the willingness of the parents, the families, the kids to be engaged in, in the dialogue. And it isn't just about what we can figure out from this dais or what the, the district can figure out, the staff can figure out from this building or even the principals from their offices. It's really about how this community wraps its arms around its schools and its students. And that to me is incredibly inspiring. And I kind of, you know, I hesitate to say it, but I kind of say, ah, numbers schmumbers. We, you know, there's lots of stuff that we need to, we need to work on. There's lots of stuff that, that we can improve on and that will always be there. But what really, and to hit on your point of having a, you know, having a teacher there ready and excited about educating, excited about the kids in their, their classroom. I see that a lot in the Jefferson Cluster. And I'm, you know, I feel lucky that my son is going to be a student in the Jefferson Cluster. So thank you for all the work that all of you do.
I just also wanted to mention that I met with some Jefferson seniors about two weeks ago in preparation for, I'm going to be doing the little four to five minute talk at the Jefferson graduation this year. And one of the things that they talked about when I asked them who they wanted to thank in the community, they talked about the alumni in the Jefferson Cluster and how the alumni have fought and fought and fought for this school and for this cluster over the years. And that it inspires them. So it was really cool to hear the students recognizing the love of the adults in the community. So just wanted to share that.
Couple of them were here earlier too, so it was nice to see them here.
So I, I have a couple more challenging questions for, for some of you all. And some of it really is about thinking about what are some of the barriers that are keeping us from getting equitable outcomes at your, at your schools? Because really when we look through, it's obvious that families and there's a lot going on that are, that's going really well. But there are also some significant, really significant racial gaps. There are significant achievement gaps. Some of the lines are trending down the wrong way. So I'd be curious to hear, and I'm going to call out some schools. And any one of these schools, I won't put any one school on the spot, but if you could talk a little bit about what some of those barriers are for you achieving. And I will highlight, and I'm going to take one off the fact that you can say this. I will just note that every school that received a school improvement grant in our district has seen extraordinary growth. And that is a testament to the leadership. That is a testament to the staff in that building. That is a testament to the communities and the kids. And it's a testament to the power of investment in our schools. There's just no getting around that. So I'm going to take off investment. You can't use that as one of your options. So I'm specifically looking at Jefferson with the gap with, with Hispanic students you referenced. Beaches on a really big decrease in white student achievement and using third grade milestone data. Boise Elliott has a really large Hispanic gap. Chief Joseph Black and Hispanic. Fabian, 36, a big gap with black students. Oakley Green, significantly low achievement with black students. And all students, again, using these data numbers. Vernon, black and Hispanic. Woodlawn, Hispanic. So can, can some of you talk a little bit about what's keeping, what's keeping us from achieving there? Cause my guess or my assumption is it's not the students, right? Yep, if somebody could pass the.
Well, I, I think something that we are really, we've been exploring a lot this year at Boise Elliott Humboldt. And it's not just Hispanic. We do have a gap with black and white students as well. One thing that is very prevalent is stress and trauma in our kids' lives. And I don't want to generalize because many of our students are doing well with the same stress and trauma. But what we are lacking in our schools, even in a comprehensive school, you know, now with the, the pre-K eight merger and, and more staff, is wraparound service that we can really support our kids. I believe completely in the staff at Boise Elliott Humboldt. We've been trained well. We understand reading and math instruction. But there are situations that our kids live through and come to school with that it, engagement can become a real issue. So when we can bring in programs that are rigorous and really can change a pathway in a child's brain. And we can bring in the arts that do the same. It gives kids another pathway, another way to learn how to persevere and how to really have that stick with it-ness in any content. And we, we are seeing a transfer of, of just a challenge in, in changing pathways. Because what we notice, and we really look carefully with the RTI model, not just with academics this year, but with behavior. And our tier three kids, we have over 35 kids in the building at the beginning of the year that are tier three. So tier three means these are children that need intense intervention. And it's not academic. Kids are very bright, but it's being able to stay in a classroom, to stay focused, to stay engaged. And most of that is based on just trauma that is, you know, based on poverty, on racism, institutional, you know, school, whatever it might be, displacement in a community, merging schools. All these things really impact our kids. So we have 35 kids in the building that are on success plans. And they have a daily intervention that's happening, whether it's, you know, check-ins with teachers. And that could be once, twice, three times a day. It's meaningful jobs that they are doing, just all kinds of things where adults are touching children. We have another group in the middle, about 70 kids that are tier two. And so when you look at that, and, and they receive interventions too, on a behavior level. So it's teaching and reteaching and supporting kids in just the area of resilience and school behavior. So when you look at that, that's, you know, over 100 children, which is a quarter of the kids that you serve, a quarter or even, you know, more of the kids that you serve on a daily basis. And these are children whose families believe in the school. They give them everything they've got. They want the best for their children. Teachers who spend hours and hours and hours and hours planning and preparing and attending events for kids and developing relationships. But there's just mental health and wraparound services that our kids absolutely need. And as a school district, we can't provide that. And we are relying on Sun School and we're relying on SEI and our partners. But it really impacts engagement.
Thank you. Somebody else?
Yes, so at Oakley Green this year, we were designated as a priority school. And so one of the things that we did this year is we had a full day of professional development to really go deeper in instruction. One of the strategies is around having higher expectations and targeted expectations for students. So in this, we had an expert, Tamika Fuller. She's working with Kimberly Mateer here around assessment. And she, she's working with us in a program called MAPS, Measurement of Academic Progress. And you know, we had a session that really for me highlighted what we need to do more of. There was a, a teacher who brought in her lesson to Tamika. Our task was, the teacher needed to tear her lessons out for a high student, a medium student, and a student that is still developing the area of math. And those lessons, the teacher had to give the lessons to different students. So the student, a fifth grader, looked around the room. So this is a developing fifth grader. He saw his peer doing a higher level lesson. He looked at the teacher, he said, I don't want this one. I want the higher one. Right there, that was a moment. That do we have all the data to really make sure we're giving students the highest expectation? And that teacher said, you know what, all year long in mathematics, this student was pretty much engaged, disengaged. I did not think, and this is a stellar teacher, I did not think he would want this higher expectation. So the lesson was still around the Bridges curriculum, but it was more intense. So how are we providing students with more acceleration? Increasing the capacity in our program to make sure that that's not an isolated moment, but that's happening for each child every day. And that was, that was powerful for me. Another thing is that looking at students, building relationships with students, but also looking at some alternatives to out of school suspensions. So I'm very thankful for the staff this year because we looked at our school climate and we began to think about some alternatives to out of school suspension. So one might be after school community service time, where the student would have to help us after school in some way to improve our community. You know, my thing is, if you make poor choices in school in front of other students, those same students need to see you making good choices in our school to make our school better. So being creative in ways to keep students in school is also a powerful piece. But also building those relationships with parents in those ongoing conversations and meetings is important. The last thing I want to say is the pre-K programs are outstanding. That's a way that we can close the gap before they even open. At Oakley Green this year, we, we had, we've been wanting a pre-K for years. But this is our first year we actually received one. And I tell you, we have youngsters of all colors who are ready to read. They have those school readiness skills. They're not going to come in kindergarten figuring out what to do. They're going to know what to do from day one. So that's another point of acceler- acceleration. So pre-K programs, those higher expectations around accelerating students and looking at all alternatives to student management are some strategies that I know we need to deepen in my school.
Since, I'm sorry, do you want to add something along this lines? I'm just looking at the clock and it's eight o'clock and, and I know he's going to be cutting us off pretty soon here. But one of the things that I wanted to come back to is, is, is I think what you raised, Conrad, and that is the whole course of discipline. And, and I think Woodlawn also raised that in regards to the, the changing the stats. I mean, in terms of, you know, have an impact in regards to the discipline. I was at a meeting last week and, and to some extent, I think it's, you know, it's, a comment was made that, that, that in terms of discipline, you know, that the, the approach is not necessarily, you know, that systematic, you know, across the district. And two is that, that, you know, the, the allegation, I would say, is, is that the problem still exists in, in regards to discipline? It's just that the, the way that people are recording the, the incidents. That's different than, than saying we are changing how we are approaching and, and what we're doing, which is basically what you're saying in regards to what are we doing? What are we, how we are, we are changing in practice, you know, in terms of looking at, you know, keeping students in school versus, you know, how we record the statistic. Okay? So can you speak towards that in regards to, because I don't want you to be, you know, one, you know, regarded as one of those schools that are saying that they're just changing the way they're recording the statistics. There's actual change in regards to the, the behavior and the impact that we're having in students in regards to keeping them in school?
One of the, one of the things that we've.
One of the things that we've done over the last two years as a PBIS school is have some very...
Can you say what PBIS is for the general audience?
A Positive Behavior Intervention Supports System. And what it is, is it's a philosophy of a school-wide look at how we work with kids and set up our classroom management systems. And for instance, is we have four school-wide guidelines. Be safe, be respectful, be responsible, and be kind. And under each one of those, every single classroom teaches the expectations of what that looks like, what that sounds like, how, what it is and what it's not. Three times a year, we set up stations around our school, common area stations like the bathroom. So it's go, flush, wash, leave. There's a routine there that we teach all of the kids. So they're in and out in a very unsupervised way. We also have little chants for, at the drinking fountain, and how you behave at the drinking fountain. I run the station of our assembly behavior. And so we talk about what it's like and what it looks like, what it sounds like when we have an assembly behavior. So we're teaching direct skills to kids. Then the expectation is, is that in every single classroom, the classroom teachers, again, are teaching their expectations for their classroom management system. We've also had some very in-depth conversations about what problems the teacher needs to take care of and what problems the administration needs to take care of. And we talk about these in minor and major. So if you have a child, I mean, we used to see kids on a daily basis for making noises, tapping pencils, jumping up and hitting the top of the door, the door frames. And these were kids who were sent out of the classroom with referrals. And basically, we went through with our staff and said, "These are classroom behaviors that the teacher has to take care of and figure it out." And so we've set some systems up where the expectation is, the teacher has a conference with the child. The teacher calls home and has a parent conversation with the child. And it really has turned how we are dealing with it. So we're not changing how we're inputting it. We're just not seeing it because teachers are taking the responsibility because they're professionals and they're teaching the kids the necessary skills and they're keeping their kids in class. And so that's been, that's been pretty tremendous, I think.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Oh, it definitely does.
Before you give up the microphone, though. I just, and this is true at a couple of schools in your cluster, but also having gone through the Jefferson enrollment balancing and knowing a lot of families in this cluster, there are a lot of really revolutionary ideas and changes going on in special education in this cluster. People really dedicated to including all students, when they say all students. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about some of the work that you're doing at Woodlawn because you have this great continuum.
I am so proud to be the only school in Portland Public Schools to have a K-8 CB Continuum. And for those people that don't know what a CB Continuum is, it's Communication Behavior, which I think is, to me, it's a negative connotation because it's kids who are on the spectrum, on the autism spectrum. And so what we have is, we have a K-2, it's a multi-age, CBA, where the kids spend the majority of the day in the classroom. And then we also have a CBA 3-5, where the kids spend a lot of the time in the classroom. And then we have a 6-8 CB team, which is very different because the majority of the days, my boys, because they're all boys, we've got 11 boys, are mainstreamed in the 6, 7, 8. And so the general ed teachers have to really understand how to differentiate and understand what it is to be autistic. And so the kids are just absolutely wonderful. At the 3-5, the kids are mainstream a lot of the day. I mean, kids go out and come in just for very specific instructional strategies for, like, social stories. Because autistic people don't have the executive functioning. And that's the part that we have to teach them is, they don't read faces. And so there's a program that we use where a lot of, and I can't generalize, but a lot of our autistic kids and autistic people are attracted to trains. And so there are human faces on these trains that teach the kids how to appropriately socialize. Because they don't understand, "This is my space, that is your space. No, you're not supposed to touch my necklace. I'm not going to talk to you for five hours about Star Trek," in that sense. And so we're directly teaching these skills. And what's really interesting is, I was at a cluster meeting with, wow, where's Kevin? I'm tired.
Hosford?
What?
Hosford?
No.
Arlita?
Arlita?
Arlita.
There's a couple of Kevins.
He was showing us a program called Mindful, Mindful Program, which is Goldie Hawn, I don't know how she's come up with this. But I'm going to actually purchase this for my entire staff. And it's great lessons for all of us to use around teaching really specific executive functioning skills that our kids across the board are lacking. And so all of our students will benefit from it. But it's really, I mean, they're great kids, and it's a great program. And I am very proud of my sped staff who have built it. Because when it came to my school, it was, there was no training, there was no planning. And the first year, they, like, pulled it together. And just one last story is, I have a parent who is now a big advocate for Woodlawn. And you all have heard his story, I'm sure, with the enrollment and Jefferson enrollment balancing process. But when he came to our school, he came kicking and screaming. And I met with him at least four times, and he was like, "I don't want my child to go here. My child, this is, this is my child's neighborhood school. I haven't heard anything good about it." And this gentleman has done a 360, and he now is a strong advocate for not only the Continuum program, but Woodlawn School. And so I'm very proud of what my teachers have done, what we've done. So thank you for giving me that opportunity to brag. I'm not a good bragger.
I just want to add, this was totally inspirational to listen to you all present the cluster. And I found myself close to tears many times listening to you. But I would just say, like, I frequently think of it being really about the leader. And I, sorry, I'm doing, I thought I was past it. In terms of how you engage with partners and how you engage with your parents, and the quality of how every single one of you describe what's going on in your school and how you have engaged with partners to make a richer experience for the kids in your school, I would just say, as a cluster, you have, and it's each unique to your own school community, and it's each unique what you have figured out how to lean in and make really exciting things going on that are about your school community, but that you're really connected to one another. I just am so impressed, but it is so about your leadership as principals, that you have figured out how to do that to really meet the needs of your kids. And there is, and I know this from being in your schools and interacting with your partners who talk about what it is that's really meaningful partnership, where they're really connected to your school community and to your kids and to you. But it's true of your entire cluster, and that's really powerful to me. And it's also, I think, fundamentally part of what Margaret talked about at Jefferson, which is how do you build about strengths that are in the school and in the school community, not paced in things coming in from the outside. You guys have just been building such a vision across the entire cluster with each other that's really, I think, foundational for these kids and for this community for years to come. So it was wonderful to sit and listen to it as a one-united portrait of what's happening in the cluster. The other thing I'm just so struck by is having done the merger with Boise-Elliott-Humboldt, which was really a hugely challenging, how do you build community and bring together communities? And I think you guys have done a fabulous job, you and your staff, of really leading that and having it be a strong community that the parents feel, the kids feel, and your entire staff feels in one year. It's remarkable. And they speak to that, and it comes out in how everybody talks about what's going on in a way with such pride that I'm just really moved by. And to the two of you who have been preparing for a merger where you're then going to leave and go off and lead other schools, but where you have worked so solidly as a team in preparing your communities, have how to come together to be a single community, and then Molly leaving yours to then go move. You've just got an incredible amount of art going on in how you are leading that I just want to fully appreciate. It was really wonderful. And then Margaret and Oscar and Ricky, who's now back at school. You guys have just done a magnificent job of what is happening at Jefferson right now that I feel so excited and so proud of. So, but again, I try to tribute to the whole, the whole team and what's happening there at Jefferson. Talking to your staff, when I was just listening to you talk about the freshman academies, every teacher in that building believes in that freshman academy because of the difference it's making for what happens as students move through. And you can feel the collective energy of your entire staff, who understand exactly what it is you're building and how you're building strength in those students to really excel and take advantage of the opportunity that's there. So again, just tribute to all of your leadership. I just was moved to tears many times, as you can tell, because I'm still there. So anyway, thank you for tonight. You just did a fabulous job.
Indeed, thank you very much, because we know that it is hard work every single day, and there are amazing things going on. While we can look at pieces to be improving, it is great work. So with this, we're going to let you get home or get back to work, whichever you're going to wind up doing. But before you do that, if we could have you step in front of the dais with us so that we can take a picture with you, and then we're going to take a short five-minute break.
I was trying to figure out if I could project it off my phone.
Thank you.
What has just happened?
Our team just cut it out.
Oh, jeez, literally in the middle today.
That helps. I'm fine, I'm cool. Hey, if you're heading up to get a cookie, Greg.
Okay.
We can stay if you have questions or would like additional information. So, two initiatives were called for as part of the outcome of the Jefferson enrollment balancing process, two initiatives that affect schools district-wide. One of those is to revise enrollment and transfer policies, and the other to look at all of our boundaries across the whole district. Brief update on where we are with those. Mostly what we have to report tonight is quite a bit of progress around the enrollment policy work and the work of SACIT, which is the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer. It's been a standing committee for four years. There are 17 members, eight of whom are recent appointees. They've been providing advice on a number of enrollment and transfer-related issues and are now ready and willing to dig deep into this, this broad request. They have new co-chairs, Allison Burnett, Jason Tromley. Jason's in the room tonight, and as is Scott Bailey, another longtime SACIT member. So, you don't have to go far to find SACIT members actively engaged in a lot of PPS issues. A very diverse group. The Superintendent has delivered this charge to them regarding making revisions to, recommending revisions to enrollment and transfer policy to improve alignment with the PPS strategic framework and our racial educational equity policy. She's also to ask, asked them to stand ready to participate in the district-wide boundary review process. This is the list of the policies that will be the focus of SACIT's work. Briefly, what's happening with those policies, as we've said before, we identify that they're largely policies that were developed at other times to solve different problems than what we're facing now, that they don't clearly acknowledge or offset many of our existing inequities, particularly to access, in the area of access. They don't address the needs of all PPS students and don't allow flexible use for our schools. So, some of the changes that we can make through these policies are such slow changes that they don't allow us to respond to overcrowding and the like. So, what does that mean graphically? Well, this depiction shows you our current PPS K-12 population and how they're distributed by different school types. So, about 67% of students in PPS K-12 attend their neighborhood school, 14% attend a different neighborhood school, 12% a focus option or PPS alternative, 4% a community-based partner program or special service, and about 3% in a PPS charter. Now, if our policies were producing equal results in all ways, then when you looked across the district, different geographies, different racial groups, any way you wanted to slice it, you should see somewhat similar results. Well, what we see instead, so this chart, and this was developed during the Jefferson enrollment balancing process, so it's not new, but just to remind you, this is a picture of seven of our PPS clusters, and each bar represents a racial group with the bar to the far left being all students. And you see about 67% indeed attending neighborhood schools, so pretty similar to what the overall graph was. But when you look across different racial groups, for most, you see different bands, the size of the band meaning different participation, different school types, particularly in the darker purple band, which is our focus options, and in our light blue band way up there at the top, which is charter schools. Okay, so, so, hold that in your mind for a minute, and now I'm going to show you specifically the Jefferson cluster. And actually, so I should point out that these charts are focused on our K-8 students, not K-12, but even in the K-8 spectrum. Just the difference between what it looks like across seven clusters and what it looks like in one cluster is a telling sign that our policies and how we're implementing them are not producing results that are equal across all groups and therefore raising a large amount of equity-based issues. There are many other aspects to our policy that are worth looking into, and that's what SACIT's going to be taking on. What we see is a potential outcome of their review process is some recommendations that will both interrupt and remedy inequities in our current system, a roadmap to achieve more equitable outcomes, and the final delivery from SACIT is likely to be some kind of document with both policy recommendations, analysis, rationale, and process. So, at the end of their work, you can expect something like that. What we've been spending time in the last two months is forming the committee and deciding on how that work is going to flow. So, we have a draft work plan. We're still in that orientation stage and about to move into sort of deep dives into some of these policy areas. They've agreed to work through the summer and then some, then move into the recommendation stage. What you should, what we see consistently across all of them is a lot of training and support to enhance their own racial equity understanding. So, SACIT is receiving a customized version of the Beyond Diversity Training, which is, I believe, the first time we've done that for an advisory group. And that, that'll be happening this month. They're also going on the Fair Housing Busing Tour and doing some other things to make sure that their focus on equity is consistent with the tools and practices that we use across the rest of the district. We are very much looking forward to the involvement of board members throughout this process, and we're also right now setting up a way to have principal panels so that SACIT can hear and engage with principals around these issues in similar ways that you were able to do in some of the panels that you've had. We expect broader community involvement process, particularly when we get to a recommendation stage. So, when the committee has something for the public to respond to, we definitely expect to be moving into a community environment for that. It's important to note that the actual timeline for this, we believe, should be shaped by the progress the committee is making. We don't know quite how long this will take to get it right, and we believe getting it right matters more than getting it fast. However, we know that there's a great amount of urgency surrounding these issues, and so we'll be doing our best to balance both of those things. So, that's a quick update on what's been happening with SACIT, where a lot of our staff work has been focused in the last couple of months. We also have this parallel effort of a district-wide boundary review. Now, unlike the, the policy work where we had a standing body that was ready to be activated and engaged, we don't have a standing body that's probably, that's teed up to take on this work. So, we've had some conversations with planning partners, such as the City of Portland, that we would like to be involved in helping us shape a, a plan, a process, that would, that would allow us to take a deep look at what our boundaries are now, what our values are for the schools that those boundaries are supposed to serve, and, and be really clear on the values level before we then go into sort of the mechanics or the, the data, technical analysis that might produce, you know, different outcomes. So, we see the long-range facility planning process that happened last year with a large stakeholder group as perhaps a template that we'll be following, and there's a sense of the different types of partners, types of activities that we would expect to happen with that. And now that we're, we're sort of settled on a plan for how SACIT's getting started, we'll be turning our attention to more clarity around the district-wide boundary review process. So, that's the update that we had for you tonight. Did I miss anything, John? Any clarifying questions for us?
Great.
Where we can step back and lots of other people to hear from tonight.
Yeah, go ahead.
From Mike, thank you very much. I'm really excited to see the direction that we're going, the one that's more consistent across the district, but also more consistent with the policies that we have now that we didn't have when the enrollment and transfer policy was, was designed several years ago. One of the things that I'm, I, I was kind of under the impression prior to receiving my packet and prior to tonight, that we were going to be talking a little bit more about the, the resolution, the information that was embedded in the resolution, particularly around the, the work in preparing Oakley Green and Chief Joe to merge. Is that going to be something?
We're getting that next.
Yeah, we're getting out of the way.
Thank you very much.
There's a lot of good stuff on, still on the docket tonight. We just wanted to give you that high level.
Well, thank you. I'm glad I queued it up for you.
Although, if people have questions about how we're moving this process forward now is the time to, so that we don't kind of set this in motion with SACIT if there's something else.
And we are identifying board liaisons to this that we've said will both interact with, back and forth with the committee, like get some stuff from the committee, perhaps sit in and watch deliberations of the committee, but where we want a, a group of board members who are really up close to this and really feeling, you know, how it's moving. The second one that Judy mentioned that I'm just going to underscore is we were really clear in the charge of this one, that we're going to take stock in, like October, November, to see where we are and if there are things that could impact the next enrollment and transfer cycle, but we are not saying, we're trying to end up accomplishing the work to impact the next enrollment transfer cycle so that we don't end up with a false deadline that compacts the work that, I mean, we believe this one is one that we really want to have the thorough and desired impact over time and not to try and have it accelerated to meet a false deadline. So, just, but we want the opportunity that if we feel prepared and there's something we want to be able to implement in the next cycle, that we take stock at the right moment to allow us to go through the processes to do that. So, we're trying to hit that nuance of allowing deep work and, but, but deep work that's going to impact, you know, change over time.
So, I had a question. I've, I've had a lot of people at the districts say to me when I'm talking about language immersion programs and are hopefully introducing more language immersion programs, that, you know, wait, 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 that's all going to be part of the enrollment and transfer discussion. And it's not clear to me that that's actually the case. And so, I guess I want to hear a little bit more about how the whole language immersion piece might fit into this one. So, for example, we've talked about perhaps opening more Spanish immersion programs. We've talked about the huge demand for Mandarin and whether or not we want to replicate that. We've obviously heard a lot of testimony from the Vietnamese community and, you know, and, yeah, I mean, there's environmental schools, so there's a whole variety of different things. But I guess I'm trying to understand whether those discussions will be on parallel tracks or whether they will be one conversation or not. So, can you help me with that?
I'm going to let Judy do, and then I'll...
So, it's been a pleasure working with GM Garcia and others on, on that process of trying to look at expansion. And I think when we get to the time that, so you've got a group who's working right now to identify places where expansion makes the most sense and what that timeline, like what it will take to have those programs be successful. But at some point, the capacity in the schools and the type of enrollment that we expect in them will become an important factor. And at that moment, it will intersect with this process. And I think what we would like to have is, at, at the end of district-wide boundary review, a, a roadmap, if you will, for where we can expect change over time and where we would then pop in programs because we believe that's, that's the right time and place for it, and where you can go ahead and start a program now because, because those, the environment exists to make it, to make it work. Instead of continually taking a piecemeal approach, you know, sort of one at a time, like everything becomes a one-off decision, I, I believe that, that this is the time to try and put all those pieces out together on the table and try and make sure that they're connected, and then go and implement in places where it'll help us close the, the gap and, and do the most for kids. So...
So, I'll just say, one of the conversations that SACIT has been having and knows is part of what they're trying to grapple with is the, just the dynamic of the whole system and the, of healthy neighborhood schools and what amount of choice we can have and have it be all sustainable. And so, that is, in the broad sense, some of what they're going to be looking at, and yes, at the same time, we've got a track of how we're moving with and a goal of how we're adding the dual immersion for the coming year. But, yeah, it, it totally intersects, as Judy just said, and some of this is totally what SACIT has been grappling with and what they will continue to grapple with is just how do you, how do you do both of those things and the ecology of a whole system that then you're not draining the ability to have healthy programs, so.
And I could see an intersecting, so, for example, if SACIT decides that the policy to make it most equitable, right, is to, is to not have choice, and so that means we're going to allow certain language programs or whatever the focus option program is, when you cite them, they're going to be in specific locations designed for certain purposes? Or what amount of flexibility are we going to do that? Are we going to move this to here? So, it, they seem intertwined and parallel, but I feel like SACIT needs to do kind of their work about how these all interplay.
But we're not waiting for that work in order to keep the work going on the dual immersion programs. Like, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's all in motion. So, like, we're also looking for what are the program, language immersion that we're going to expand.
Yeah, and the one that I keep thinking about also is the idea that we have these four regional high schools that are supposed to be our regional immersion programs, and some of them are frankly floundering and some aren't. And I, I just want to make sure that that conversation is moving forward. And I, I keep feeling like I'm, I'm being pushed back, like, you know, we have to get through this other thing first. Well, this, this enrollment piece, enrollment and transfer policy piece feels really big.
Because it is.
Because it is. And so, I worry about other things getting stuck behind it, and I don't think we can afford that, so.
If I could say, part of the taking stock moment is probably trying to, to make sure that the parts that can and should move with more urgency are on a path to do that, and the parts, the pieces that maybe will take more time, need more time, have the, we have the ability to do that.
Great, thank you. Now, we are going to move on to the Jefferson enrollment balancing update.
All right. Thank you.
Which involves some of the same people.
What I'm going to give you is a brief description in terms of what has been happening with Oakley Green, Chief Joseph consolidation. I told the parents, I promised the parents, since they have young kids over here, that they will go first. So, there's going to be three people or three presentations, the members of the transition team, then there will be a presentation by Molly, and then one by Rudy Rudolph. And those are promised to be short but to the point. Again, I'm here in front of you to talk to you about in terms of the consolidation, how it's going. And again, I'm blessed to work with such amazing people, you know, parents, teachers, and just how they came together and, and just the level of dedication for our kids, for our community is just, just amazing. I am, again, really, really amazed of all the things that they have done. So, I'm going to have members of the transition team come and talk to you about what the transition, because right after the board resolution, they were already engaged with us in terms, so how can they engage the district in order to make sure that we have collaboration, that we have transparency, that we engage, engage our parents and engage our community and engage our teachers. So, I'm going to have some of the members of the transition team give you a little bit description of what has been the work, what has been successful, what have been the, or are the challenges, and what are the recommendations that they have for us.
I'm J, S-H-A-N-D-A-J-U-S-T-I-C-E, and I am a member of the transition team. I'm also a parent of two children at Oakley Green, one in the seventh grade and one in the first grade, and I'm proud to be part of this team because it's made up of teachers, parents, and community members who all devoted their time and their families to help bring these two communities together. We understand the importance of working together and striving to improve our school. And once the district made the decision to combine the schools, it was kind of quick, and it kind of made some of our families feel uneasy. And so, that's why we thought it was a good thing to come together, to show one another that we're going to do this, and we did it on our own without the districts asking us to do so. And so, what we've done is, at both schools, when there's community events, we've gone to both schools, we've supported one another. There was a Watch Us Grow event, dance parties, movie nights at each other's school, and also put together the tours at each school so that the communities both can, one, get comfortable with the, with both campuses and also get to meet the new families that we were going to be involved with so that we can get familiar with each other's faces. And with doing that, it's been good, a little struggle, but for the most part, it's good. And I think the best part is our kids getting to see one another and play with one another and meeting new friends, and also seeing other parents who are in the same boat and wanting the same thing.
Hi, my name's Jessica Thompson, J-E-S-S-I-C-A-T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I have a son at Chief Joseph, a fifth grader at KK. He's here with me tonight, and he'll be attending Oakley Green next year as a sixth grader. I'm a former language arts teacher, so I wrote my speech out, and it's a little long, so I apologize. It's just like, do as I say, but not as I do to all my former students. I'm sorry. All right. Greetings, School Board Directors and Superintendent Smith. Thank you for the opportunity to share the Chief Joseph, Oakley Green, PTO, PTA, transition team experiences with merging our two schools into one school community. Moving forward, we sincerely hope that you take our feedback and use it to improve the community engagement procedures when you consolidate two schools. As we stated earlier, the team met every Tuesday evening for two and a half to three hours, starting in February. We ended at the end of May. Because we each have unique perspectives and because our school communities have not historically had much of a relationship, these conversations were often very intense. Our merge is operating within the complex construct, the complex context of gentrification, race, class, privilege, and historical institutional marginalization. We shared anger, tears, hope, and optimism as we had the difficult conversations necessary to move forward to a new reality, a unified school on a dual campus. Here is what we accomplished. In the month of March and the beginning of April, we organized weekly tours of each building for parents whose students will be attending the other school. We wrote weekly columns in the Chief Joseph Friday Flyer. We maintained bulletin boards at each building with updates on merge information as PPS and PPS. And once the district made the decision to combine the schools, it was kind of quick and it kind of made some of our families feel uneasy. And so that's why we thought it was a good thing to come together, to show one another that we're going to do this. And we did it on our own without the districts asking us to do so. And so what we've done is, at both schools, when there's community events, we've gone to both schools, we've supported one another. There was a Watch Us Grow event, dance parties, movie nights at each other's school, and also put together the tours at each school so that the communities both can, one, get comfortable with the, with both campuses and also get to meet the new families that we were going to be involved with so that we can get familiar with each other's faces. And with doing that, it's been good, a little struggle, but for the most part, it's good. And I think the best part is our kids getting to see one another and play with one another and meeting new friends and also seeing other parents who are in the same boat and wanting the same thing.
Hi, my name's Jessica Thompson, J-E-S-S-I-C-A-T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I have a son at Chief Joseph, a fifth grader, KK. He's here with me tonight. And he'll be attending Oakley Green next year as a sixth grader. I'm a former language arts teacher, so I wrote my speech out, and it's a little long, so I apologize. Just like, do as I say, but not as I do to all my former students. I'm sorry. All right. Greetings, school board directors and superintendent Smith. Thank you for the opportunity to share the Chief Joseph, Oakley Green, PTO, PTA transition team experiences with merging our two schools into one school community. Moving forward, we sincerely hope that you take our feedback and use it to improve the community engagement procedures when you consolidate two schools. As we stated earlier, the team met every Tuesday evening for two and a half to three hours, starting in February. We ended at the end of May. Because we each have unique perspectives and because our school communities have not historically had much of a relationship, these conversations were often very intense. Our merge is operating within the complex context of gentrification, race, class, privilege, and historical institutional marginalization. We shared anger, tears, hope, and optimism as we had the difficult conversations necessary to move forward to a new reality, a unified school on a dual campus. Here is what we accomplished. In the month of March and the beginning of April, we organized weekly tours of each building for parents whose students will be attending the other school. We wrote weekly columns in the Chief Joseph Friday Flyer. We maintained bulletin boards at each building with updates on merge information as PPS developed that information. We hosted three community meetings, one to give feedback about what we want in a principal. And after our principal was announced, we hosted two with Molly Chun, Antonio Lopez, Rudy Rudolph, and the Just Do It team. We wrote a family perspectives about our schools and the merge survey and collected the responses from both parent and staff communities. We compiled that information and shared it with Principal Molly Chun. We worked closely with Erin Burnett to help write and distribute FAQ sheets about merge-related information such as transportation, before and after-school care, staffing, and other transition-related issues that were near and dear to the hearts of our families and students. Finally, we worked closely with district staff to make sure that information was translated into Vietnamese, Spanish, and Somali. We also advocated that robocalls go out prior to each meeting, and this is more difficult than you could possibly imagine. We also advocated that our principals hold shared weekly parent coffees at each school to ensure that we were all getting the same information at the same time. And I guess finally, finally, we had a parent show up at our first meeting. He was so inspired by the merge that he's, came with some logos and branding for our two schools to help build the community. And we have some examples of those to share with you today. One is, Lonnie, do you want to go show the board members? He brought everybody in the, on the transition team, some examples of some buttons that he created to distribute to at both schools. So we, the transition team thought it was a good idea. We ordered enough for every student and staff member at each building. And in this time and place, that is PPS enrollment balancing madness, we joined the ranks of many Jefferson cluster schools and created lawn signs to show our support and encourage those attending private and charter schools to attend our school. So lots of things went right. However, we also encountered some challenges, and they are as follows. One, ensuring equity as far as community process. It was difficult to both advocate for information and communicate the information in a manner that was inclusive of all. For example, there are families in our communities who believe they should be a part of every decision-making process, and there are families who just want to be given the information. Suggestion moving forward, make a timeline available early in the consolidation process that will provide an outline of what information will be available, when, and what department will be in charge of that decision. Two, because there was no mandate from the board, because there was a mandate from the board to engage the community, but no protocol on how to do that, we spent a lot of time running in circles. And again, that cannot be overemphasized. Some folks took us seriously while others did not. When things went well, it was often because we had direct intervention and help from Erin Burnett and Antonio Lopez. Suggestion moving forward, as parents, we can be your allies, establishing communication protocols and ensuring all parties understand that protocol. Releasing an incoming principal one day a week to focus on their upcoming school, especially when you're talking about a merger with a dual campus, is crucial. That cannot be overstated. Our communities needed and still need time and support as we do the work of coming together. We realize that PPS has done their best in terms of the logistics of this merge, but on a relational level, we are working against years of misrepresentation, rumors, and the reputations of our two communities. Suggestion moving forward, we need time and professional facilitation. Give communities time, give us professional facilitation. A merge like this is more than logistics. Trust that you have committed families willing to collaborate and give input in a meaningful way. Facilitating restorative listening and courageous conversations are two places to start. In conclusion, we have made progress, yes, but please don't think that this transition is in any way comparable to Boise-Elliott-Humboldt merger or Beverly-Clary merger. There are many more dynamics at work here. The transition team has only skimmed the surface in bringing our two communities together. There remains tremendous mistrust of PPS, deserved or undeserved, to give true support to this merger and to do the hard work that is required. There remain significant walls to effective communication between both parents and staff. Yes, we have put a dent in the work that needs to be done, and yes, we believe that Molly Chun is a strong leadership choice for our new schools, but she is not superhuman. And your work, you, the PPS administration and the board, your work is not done here. We have expectations that you will now take the reins and do what is required to make this school succeed. There is a long road ahead. Our school communities stand with you in ensuring that we build a strong, stable, unified school community. Thank you.
It's okay. Before they leave, I just want to thank them again for their time. So thank you for being here, and I hope you guys can get some rest. Thank you.
So next, again, it is an honor and a privilege to introduce Molly Chun, the new principal of Chief Joseph Oakley Green.
Hi again. So I'm just going to give kind of an overview of what we've been doing and the work that has happened since the announcement of the merger. Actually, quite shortly after it was announced, I had a joint staff meeting with both staffs and really had a chance. We actually had some courageous conversations, did some equity work, and I was able to give just kind of a clear vision of my style and what I saw as the benefits of the merger and where I felt we could go. Number one being that this is a way to strengthen the Jefferson cluster and that the work that we do benefits not only the children of Chief Joseph and Oakley Green, but all Jefferson students in creating that pathway to Jefferson High School. Okay, so after that, then, we had a transition meeting, which was great. And the first meeting was held at Oakley Green where Rudy and the JADIT team came and really laid out what was happening. I think one of the frustrations with the community and the family is, and the families, was that there wasn't enough communication about what was actually happening, that there was a lot of work going on behind the scenes, but it was not being communicated to the families. And with that, a lot of anxiety is created. And so as we went through the process, the more information that I could provide and that Antonio could provide and the JADIT team could provide, anxieties went down. However, there's still, there's still a lot of worry and concern about what this is going to look like.
Molly, I'm sorry, before you go on, we're using JADIT, and I'm not sure that most people understand what JADIT is.
It's Just Do It Team. It's Just Do It Team, but it's the J-D-I-T.
I just wanted to make sure that folks, right.
And I had the experience from last year to know that it is, there's so much that happens between all the departments that you really don't want to know. I mean, it's just ongoing, tons of communication. I'm in constant communication with them, but it's a lot of information that families don't necessarily want to know. However, not knowing creates that anxiety. So I was able, that first meeting, to really go through what I knew about a merger and the trust that I had in the departments as far as facilities and IT and textbooks and HR and you name it. I mean, it's just, it's pretty amazing. So that, you know, I think, supported the work. I was then able to meet with every teacher in both staffs. So I spent a couple days at each school and just doing one-on-ones to make, you know, to figure out where people wanted to be, what they wanted to do, make sure that when it came time for staffing, which included, you know, a joint seniority list. So it's taking both seniority lists from the two schools and working from that to really have a clear idea of where people wanted to be and wanted to land at both schools. I think it was about that point that it was very clear that we were going to be a K3 at Chief Joseph and a 4.8 at Oakley Green. Then the process of actually staffing the two buildings was pretty crazy. I was staffing Boise-Elliott-Humboldt at the same time as I was staffing Chief Joseph, Oakley Green. However, I didn't have access to the SMTs for Chief Joseph and Oakley Green. So that was done kind of on paper, kind of blind with HR at the same time I was staffing Boise-Elliott-Humboldt. So these are, these are some real challenges, someone Jess talked about, you know. Not that I was willing to give up a day away from Boise-Elliott-Humboldt, but it is, it's a pile of work that's, it's pretty intense.
Principal for three schools.
But we got through it. I was able to staff both buildings and was able to email all Chief Joe and Oakley Green staff what their assignment was going to be. And as soon as that process was over, then it's space assignment. So we really looked at the two buildings, and JADIT, the team, walked through both buildings with me. We looked at every single classroom, every single space, and really determined best use of space, really thinking about what grade levels should be together for the most conducive collaborative work that we could do. So for the most part, most teachers in both buildings will either change a space in the building or will move between buildings. And so you can just imagine how complicated that gets with moving materials and furniture and IT and everything. So it's a challenge, it's kind of fun, actually, but it's very time-consuming. So now, so we got through that part and at the same time, really, you know, kind of landing on programs. And we were able to, we will have a full-time PE teacher between two campuses, a full-time dance teacher between two campuses. Point five, we had a full-time art teacher, but with the art tax reduction, we'll have a point-five art teacher spending most of the time at Oakley Green because of the facility. A point-five counselor on both campuses. A, we'll have ESL support, point-five on both campuses. We'll have special ed distributed between the two campuses based on the needs of students. We will have a classified staff librarian at Chief Joseph, point-five, and a full-time certified librarian at Oakley Green, 1.0. We just found out that through the work with facilities and maintenance and everybody, I mean, I can't say enough about the departments and how they come together in these projects, that at Oakley, there will be a couple construction, I guess, remodeling or, I don't know the correct term, but there's this really crazy hall upstairs in, in Oakley that used to be just a passageway hall between two wings of the building. And then someone got real creative, I think maybe in the seventies or eighties, and chopped it up and added doors, and it drives me cra, when I was there before as an AP, I got lost. Kristen can, I get lost every time. But it's just crazy, and it's just a big safety factor because if we want kids to pass between, you know, maybe the sixth-grade hall and the seventh and eighth-grade hall, they have to go downstairs and around because the doors aren't open. So Don Hold did his magic, and he's actually going to be able to remove those walls, and it's not a very expensive project, so we'll have a clear passage that will be much safer for kids. And we just found out today that the industrial arts room is actually going to be remodeled into a dance studio. So we are going to have a dance floor, and the cabinetry in, in that facility will be removed so that it's, it's a perfect space for, for dance. And if we are really serious about developing a dance program that is a pathway to Jefferson, and we actually have kids from the Jefferson neighborhood as Jefferson dancers, it's a very exciting program. I'm really thrilled. And we worked out transportation. We'll have different start times because of the buses. Chief Joe will be 8:30 to 2:45, and Oakley will be 8:45 to 3 o'clock. The older students will be able to actually ride the bus with the youngers and back and forth so that families that need elders to walk youngers home will be able to provide that. We worked out a contract with Art for Life, which was, it's the childcare program that actually is housed at Chief Joe, and they will be on both campuses now. Sun School's been awesome. We've met many times, really trying to figure out a program and, and being able to support both campuses. Right now, Sun School is at Oakley. We're hoping that it'll be on both campuses. If not, the youngers will be supported on the Oakley campus, and we'll have transportation. But our goal is to have Art for Life at both campuses and Sun School. SEI has been great in their support as well. Am I, what am I forgetting? I think...
You missed my whole reporter, right?
Did I, Rudy? I think, so there's been a ton of work that's gone in, in the last six weeks. Sorry, Rudy. Rudy is my, oh, she's my right hand, though. I have to give her tons and tons of credit. She's amazing. We're starting, the teachers are starting to pretty much organize because they need to have, you know, all their spaces cleaned out. We've moved all the textbooks at Oakley to one location, so we're kind of in that, e-waste has come and picked up most of the corded, wasted materials, you know, the old tech stuff. And class list, teachers have been amazing. They're contacting me all the time via, you know, email and phone calls. Really, really excited about the new year, but concerned, you know, just the unknown. Teachers have almost completed all their class list, and one of my secretaries at Boise-Elliott-Humboldt, Patty, will be following me to Chief Joe, and she's done a lot of follow-up work to support the merge already. She's typing up, you know, class lists and doing everything that she can do to support. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a joint effort. And we've had two or three, two transition meetings, whole groups. So we had the one at Oakley, and then we had a follow-up at Chief Joseph. I've met with site council and PTA, PTO. I don't know, I think that's...
We had also one for ESL families.
Yeah, that's right. Last week, we had a family night for ESL families so that we could really make sure that information was getting to, to everyone. And I think, I think...
Come on up, Rudy.
My aunt, I'm, well? Yeah, okay. Just a couple other things. JADIT, the Just Do It Team, was, we gave it that name because every time there's a closure or a merger, people make something like the Marshall Transition Team or the Marshall Committee and so on and so forth, and it gets confusing. So if we just do it to get it done, that's the best name for us because we do it every time. And we have it down to, I think, a very, almost like a science. We have 22 departments that work whenever there is a merger or closure or a move, such as the move that's going from Saban, access going from Saban to Rose City Park. It's the same team of people who do all of that. She mentioned the Transportation Department and arranging all the busing for the two sites. I would like you to know that we did listen to parents, and there had been some concern about the original time we scheduled for starting both schools. And there was a concern about how late that was for parents being able to get to work. And Terry Brady, raise your hand. Terry Brady, wonderful Transportation Department Director, was able to readjust bell times and bus schedules so that we could start a little bit earlier at both sites. The IT department is making certain that the old, there's two computer labs at Oakley Green, and one of them has tons of old computers. We're pulling all of that out and replacing them all with new laptops. She mentioned the Facilities Department. Besides the Oakley Green things, they're actually also going to be striping the pavement in the parking lot at Chief Joe. And when you move teachers from one site to another or from one grade level to another, our Instructional Resource Center makes certain that every single teacher... our Instructional Resource Center makes certain that every single teacher has all their teacher's editions, all their curriculum materials, full sets and everything, ready for them in the fall. And that will be taking place in both sites. And Library Services, when you're merging two schools such as, well consolidating two schools such as this, you have two separate libraries and you're going to have a K-three all moving to one site and four eight to another. So Library Services sends someone out to help both librarians so that they can weed through those things, box the ones up, and then they all have to be recataloged and re-barcoded. And so that takes time and so we have Library Services helping out with that. And as, I, I have to also thank the Communications Department, Erin Barnett's been wonderful about communicating with Joe Galati and Conrad about keeping, you know, everyone informed and getting things translated. They've been extremely helpful in working with her. And as I, as she said, we met our core team of Jade did. We have about five departments that meet with the staff. We explain how we move the district materials that they use. We explain to the staff how they pack their personal items. And we provide all the boxes for the teachers and no teachers are required to pack any district materials. So that's just an idea of some of the things that these twenty-two departments do. My job is, as I was named by Carol Smith years ago as the connective tissue and the connective tissue between these departments and the principals who go through this with the departments. And I, I really enjoy that job. So that's what we do.
And I will add, she's brilliant at it. Yeah, she totally is. She's got like total principle in her blood. And so she totally can see everything from the eyes of a principal and weigh attention to detail. And in terms of the connect, twenty-two departments, and you're hearing the level of execution here, that's pretty remarkable. But just, she is totally Rudy, total connector.
You ask me because I'm obsessive compulsive.
And wait, can I tell you what? And we have figured out how to totally like utilize that strength. We really need it. So I'm just going to say it's been a perfect match. Yeah. So thank you.
And then the, there's another team and I always forget the name of it, the BRRR something, that meets every Thursday and that's with Harriet Adair and Antonio and myself and Erin Barnett and Judy. And that, and we just, it's just a time to connect and make sure that we're all on the same page and things are moving.
Awesome. That's it. Thank you. Antonio, are you doing a wrap on this?
Yes.
Joe and Conrad, as you, will you just turn around and take a bow here? Because I'm going to say these guys, as we said earlier, like truly, you have like worked as a team the entire way with your communities and just the description of the back and forth and keeping people in a loop and working with Molly as you, the three of you are figuring out how this all fits together. Just thank you so much. You rock.
Thank you. And just to let you know, we, we were meeting with the transition team. We started meeting after February twenty-fifth. We were meeting once a week before Molly was named. Then on, I, I was meeting with the district team, with Rudy and with Harriet once a week on Thursday. And then I was meeting on Fridays with Conrad and Joe. So it, there is, it was a very complex, it's a very complex process. But you can see that, you know, we still have some work to do. But I can tell you that all the people that work on this, they really did their best. And, and, and I, I feel pretty confident that we're gonna, we're gonna really create just an amazing, an amazing place. The other things that I want to let you know about the other projects. We want to let you know about the partnership and I think came from King School. Talked, talked a little bit between King and PSU in terms of their arts program. This will allow graduate students from PSU to be able to work with King School, embedding the arts and also to other schools in the, in the cluster. We also want to let you know about the conversations that we've had with Concordia University, that they're not only, definitely they're excited about working with Fabian, but also they're excited about working with Wollan and Vernon in terms of the, the partnership. Those are the, yeah, those are the, the two things. Kim already talked about the Tara Memory American Music Program to King. And also talk about Jessica, Jessica Parker and what she's been able to do for King.
Thank you. Questions, thoughts, comments?
I do have a couple of questions and maybe this is for Principal Chun as well. But so a little over a week ago, we received a letter from Senator Shields and Representative Fredericks asking really for a second look at supporting in this transition. And they made some specific requests, but I'm really curious. I mean, the amount of, I couldn't keep track. Thankfully we have a report. I couldn't keep track of all the FTE here and there. But it seems like there's, there's a lot going on in this transition and I'm, I'm really curious. One of the important things in this process, we heard from parents and, and the support that they're bringing into this. But how can we as a board and as a district create a softer landing for the students during this transition point? And their families too, because that's an important piece. And is there anything right now, and I'll say this not having anything in mind in terms of what we could actually do at this point, but I'm, I'm really curious. Is there anything at this point where we can, we can create an opportunity to, to offer that softer, softer landing during this transition year, particularly as we ramp up to the next school year? So I'm-
Are you, are you talking about staffing?
Staffing, I mean, it's, it's up to you, staffing wise or FTE or whatever.
If you're going to answer, can you come, can you come up to the table? Sorry.
I, I do worry about, number one, that Oakley was a priority school and that that, now that is not the case because of the merger. Though I, I'm very confident that we can rise from that status. I still, what we found at Boise Elliott Humboldt with the merger was that it was really important to have a padding of extra support people. So we had full-time counselor, we had a student management specialist. We had, at SIS, we had the STEM TOSA, myself and our AP. And that provided a student support team is what we called that group of people and really moved the work as far as climate and engagement and looking at the tiers of behavior and making sure that we were providing support to kids that really needed it. So right now, and, and also we had three secretaries, which was amazing. And, and that was based on the fact that we were expecting more numbers to actually arrive at Boise that didn't. And then when we didn't get the numbers, I mean, we, I think we were like forty short, something like that. We were allowed to keep the FTE for the year. And that was huge. It really did make a difference to have the extra adults and the support. Because kids are in new buildings and they have new adults that they're working with and they need that one-on-one if, you know, if that's the case, to support them. So at, with this, with this consolidation, we have a point five counselor in each building because, because there are two buildings. So that, that's the thing that really complicates this. You, you might have the same amount of support, but it's spread between two buildings and that makes a huge difference. So enrichments are spread between two buildings. Counseling support is spread between two buildings. ESL is spread and sped. So that, that's, that's one of my kind of worries. It would be great to have, and I have a point five instructional specialist who was in SIS. And I worry about our priority kids and not having, you know, an instructional, an extra instructional support person to see us through the move. And also a student management specialist. We don't have a student management specialist because we have the two assistant principals. But if, if we have an assistant principal on both campus and I'm running in between, I just, I worry that we may, you know, run into a need of having someone that's an extra body, whether it's a full-time counselor in each building or an SMS that's really supporting the needs of children. And again, and the enrichment. The classrooms, the classroom situation looks really good right now with very reasonable numbers. We have at Chief Joe, we have four Ks, four ones, four twos and four threes with about twenty-four, twenty-five. I mean, they're nice sized classrooms. And at Oakley, we have three, or four fours, three fives, two six, two seven, two eights. And we are departmentalizing. Oakley was not. It was self-contained. And I just can't do self-containment, sorry. I mean, I, I really believe strongly that kids need that experience of departmental. They need to be able to get away from each other. It's really hard for middle school kids to be with the same kids, same teacher all day long. That's my personal experience. And so the middle school numbers are a little bit smaller just because we're growing that program. And for scheduling, it's, it's a real challenge. That was another, that's another huge part I didn't even talk about was, is just building schedules for two buildings, one set of enrichments that serves everyone. And that, remember the enrichment teachers, the time that the children are with the enrichment teachers is the professional development embedded time for teachers, for classroom teachers. So the schedules can get really wonky when, you know, someone has to be in a building in the morning and then they travel to the building, to the second building in the afternoon. It's, it's just a very interesting dynamic. It's, it's a lot different to have that same number of enrichments and support people in one building, but to have them in two separate buildings is, is, it's, it's going to be a challenge.
So you mentioned the priority, the priority status. And my understanding is that there really, there wasn't an FTE loss in that or was there? And it, it sounded like most of the resource coming from the priority status was, was really accounted for out of the expectations of being a priority status school. So I'm, I'm wondering what the, was there, was there a net loss with-
Well, the student, what's the SIS? What's that Stanford, student? Yes, Student Improvement Specialist. That actually came from the zone school. So Oakley was a zone school and had an SIS. And then last year it became a priority school. That didn't bring an ex, an extra personnel. It just brought in some grant money for professional development and reform. But the teacher, I mean, the, the staff and principals actually went through the process. And you heard Robin talking about, Robin Morrison talking about the plan, the cap. So that process started at Oakley, but then it didn't, so, so we don't necessarily have a plan in place. Not that I'm, I'm excited about developing that plan and putting systems in place with staff. But you, you just worry about kids that are, a school that's a priority school and that status is taken away. And I know that there are a lot of reasons why you don't want to be a priority school as well. So I, I'm not sure, you know, I, I don't, I'm not as familiar with priority status. So I don't know what I'm giving up or, but I do worry about support for children. And I worry about being able to provide interventions, both academic and behavior interventions where needed. And emotional and relational support for kids.
I appreciate that. I, I think the, the one, you know, the one piece really that I'm, that I'm kind of picking at here is I think the comment that Jess Thompson made about, you know, our work in the district isn't done in this, in this transition. And it isn't just your job, although I would make an argument that you might be superhuman in this, in this process. Being like principal over three schools and doing staffing. So I would probably have a solid argument about that. But the, but our job isn't done. So what can we do to, to make sure that we have the support someplace where the principal and the administrators and the counselors and the teachers and the students first and foremost can be successful in these new surroundings? Or same surroundings, but different conditions. And, and I think that's going to be really important for us as we, again, I think, you know, to me, it just makes sense to call it a soft landing. So I would, I would really encourage the, the administration, the staff to, to look at, what can we do that we're not doing right now that can create that kind of environment where everyone can be successful?
And the realization too, and I kind of talked about this earlier, that the stress that it does cause families and especially families that are already stressed, it, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing, you know. I don't think we understand the impact until we live it with our families.
So just also to answer your question, we'll be monitoring in terms of what are the needs that we see and advocating for those. So, so this is not the end. This is really, the work continues and, and we know that we have some things that we need to play, to pay close attention. In terms of the focus and the priority, just a little background in terms, when the focus and priority, Oakley Green was designated as a priority school and they started the process with the state. When this merged, the state was still in the process of deciding what the focus and the priority was going to be in terms of how their, their plan, their school improvement plan. At that time, they had over two hundred indicators. They later, they narrowed down to I think thirty-six indicators. So that's why, that was one of the reasons, because the state still was trying to find out how they were going to monitor that. In terms of now with the plan that they came about, with the school improvement plan that they came about, I think that there are some really good things that we can, we can borrow and, and, and implement to make sure that we, we do whatever we need for those kids that need the extra support.
I had one, I think, quick question. In your memo, there's a subhead here that's called Early Childhood Aftercare and Sun Liaisons. And I know that Conrad at Oakley Green had talked about a pre-K program at Oakley Green. There is no pre-K component at this school.
No, we lost a-
No, there is.
-sequestration victim.
I, I don't really understand that, but.
I guess piggybacking a little bit on wanting to get a soft landing and make sure that you have the support that you all want. I guess I'm, I'm struck about some of our decisions as we go into adopting our budget next week about how really we've, we did, we made some choices about where we're putting FTE to make sure that students have a high school schedule, which at this point, assuming, and these are assumptions because the state has not passed a budget, but it limits some of our flexibility, I feel like, with our FTE at these K-fives, K-eight, K-eights levels. So hopefully the state will come up with a budget better than what we're, we're hoping for. And that might allow us some flexibility to, to have that because it is really important to be spread. I mean, it's a challenge to be spread across two campuses. It's a, it's a challenge to have some of the students that are experiencing trauma in their home all of a sudden here at, at school experience a real big shifting in their environment, which could be another really traumatizing. And I guess I, I would encourage folks again, I'm going to sound like a broken horse, but we have focus and priority schools and they came with a small amount of funding for professional development and no other resources. And so alluding to what I said when we talked about it, the Jefferson Cluster, where we see movement, where we see gains is where the state, where the federal government has invested. And so I hope that the state can come around and, and do right by these students so that we can, so that we can support them in their success.
And if I can say one more thing, that as I, as I leave Boise Elliott Humboldt, if that is still in the forefront, that that's one-year merger, one-year consolidation. And, and as we, you know, as we think about supporting Chief Joe, Oakley Green, we cannot forget about Boise Elliott Humboldt because we had, we've had a great year and we need to contain, you know, continue that momentum. And there's, there's a great deal of need there.
That's a great reminder. And I'm, I'm sure that if Vernon were here, I mean, as they lose their, their last group of eighth graders regularly, I know that that school experienced a, a big infusion of resources as they gained middle school. So there are places in our, in our system where we have to continue to watch for students and support them. Thank you for the reminder. Thank you both for being here. Any other questions? Thank you both for being here. And I just again want to say, Principal Chun, thank you for all your work. It is obvious how much you love your current community. And it is a ton of work, what you're doing. And so thank you for throwing yourself into it. And I think about the skill set that it's required, not only to be an educational leader, but as you said, this, this whole merger and how complex it, it's kind of fun. Takes a very unique individual to enjoy that and to understand it and to be able to lead through it. So thank you.
Molly, thank you. I also want to thank Antonio for your leadership of the- I also want to thank Antonio for your leadership of this entire cluster presentation and then of this transition, so thank you for that. Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing? And Principal Chun, I believe you were my brother-in-law's second grade teacher.
Who's your brother-in-law?
Mark Samco.
I was!
And, yeah, yeah. So you...
See, when you stay around this long.
That's right. Thank you. Sorry, Greg.
That's okay. That's great. We are going to move on to our last couple of items, and perhaps they will go more quickly. So at our, at our May 13th Board meeting, a first reading was held on the proposed amended cash management policy. After 21 days of being open for public comment and receiving none, the board is ready to vote on the proposed amendments. Neil Sullivan, Chief Financial Officer, is here if we have any additional questions. Are there any additional questions? No. So we will now consider Resolution 4... Sorry, Mr. Sullivan. We will now consider Resolution 4764, the Cash Management Policy 8.20.01-P. Do I have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Director Morton moves, and Director Sargent seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4764. Ms. Sofich, is there any public comment on this resolution?
No.
No. Is there any board discussion on the resolution?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 4764. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4764 is approved by a vote of four to zero, with Student Representative Garcia voting.
Yes.
Yes.
That's the CFO two-step, I think, that I saw.
CFO two-step. Speaking of two steps, this is step two for second reading of amended capital asset renewal policy. At our May 13th Board meeting, a first reading was held on the proposed amendment, amended capital asset renewal policy. After 21 days of being open for public comment and receiving none, the board is ready to vote on the proposal. I saw Chief Operating Officer CJ Sylvester is here if we have any questions. Do we have any questions?
No.
We will now consider Resolution 4765. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt it?
So moved.
Director Sargent moves.
Second.
Director Morton seconds to adopt Resolution 4765. Ms. Sofich, is there any public comment on Resolution 4765?
No.
No. Is there any board discussion on the resolution? Board will now vote on Resolution 4765. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Vote 4765 is approved by a vote of four to zero. A Student Representative Garcia voting?
Yes.
Yes. We'll now consider the remaining items on the business agenda, having already voted on Resolutions 4764 and 4765. Ms. Sofich, are there any changes to the business agenda?
Yes, Resolution 4762 has been removed.
4762 has been removed. Do I have a second, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
Could I, I wanted to make a comment on the school safety resource officer, do we want to do that?
Let's do that, when we have the two motions.
Okay, so I move the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Regan moves to adopt, and Directors Sargent and Morton second the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Sofich, is there any public comment on this?
Nope.
No. Now Director Regan, if you'd like to make a comment, thank you for...
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that we have a resolution in support of our school's safety resource officers, and I wanted to kind of explore why we're coming forward with that. So back in April, I testified in Salem with some other school board members from around Oregon in support of some reasonable school safety bills being considered by a legislative committee. And at that time, during the testimony, I took the opportunity to thank our mayor in Portland and our city council for their ongoing partnership support of Portland Public Schools, and in particular of the fact that they partner with us on our school resource officers, often called school police or school safety officer, whatever. And the city of Portland provides these not only to Portland Public Schools, but also to David Douglas and to Park Rose. So during that time, when I testified, I said at that time, in Portland, we have a mayor and city council who allocate nearly a dozen school resource officers to control our district's 80 schools. They spend much of their time in our high schools and alternative schools, developing relationships with our kids and communities, and becoming a go-to resource if students hear rumors or have concerns about safety. In the event of a crisis, these officers are armed nearby and specifically trained for such situations. Our job in Portland Public Schools is to teach, and their job is to protect, and so we're grateful to the city of Portland for this partnership. So what was interesting to me, as I wanted to, then I realized, you know, wow, we should be saying that directly to the mayor and to our city council, and that's the reason that we're bringing this forward today. But just to highlight the great work of our school resource officers in this partnership, I was at Madison High School on Friday talking to a group of seniors who are graduating, and when I asked them who they would want to thank as they're graduating from Madison, they went on and on and on about several teachers, and then the next group they talked about was their school resource officers. And I thought, oh my God, isn't that amazing? So I think they really are looked at as a go-to resource and a support. So as the mayor was looking at a cut of $25 million out of the city budget this spring, George Weatherroy, who is our Director of Security Services here, and I and John Isaacs came to one of these. We met with most of our city commissioners just to help them understand what an important resource these officers are in our schools, to our principals, to the staff, to our students, and really to the whole community. And they were retained in the budget, and even though there's going to be a slight cut, I think that we wanted to acknowledge and appreciate both our school resource officers themselves and the role that they play for us, but also to thank the mayor and the city council specifically for this really quite unique and amazing partnership that we have to support our kids. So that's why, that's in here, and I'm asking for your support.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
And thank you for leading the efforts on that. It is an amazingly valuable resource, and I was appreciative of your time down in Salem and for your time with our local folks to help them understand that this isn't either-or and that this is a great way to support education and how much we rely, this is one way our community supports us supporting our kids. Thank you. Any other discussion on the business agenda? Okay. Board will now vote on business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Business agenda is approved by a vote of four to zero. A Student Representative Garcia voting?
Yes.
Great.
This is her first, we don't have this right?
It is. So we are about to adjourn, but I just want to highlight, Director Regan just reminded me that this is Student Representative Garcia's final meeting with us. So we wish her the best, and we thank you so much for your dedication and commitment in serving with us, and you know where we will be, so we hope you come back and see us.
We'll be careful.
And just for those of you that are joining in tonight and didn't see our last meeting, we did our recognition, more formal recognition of Student Representative Garcia at our last meeting, so, and we will have a new student, we have a new student representative who's been sitting dutifully through the meetings with us, so thank you, we look forward to your joining us, Andrew.
We have a seat for you right up here.
So our next meeting of the board will be a regular meeting on Monday, June 17th, here in the Board Auditorium, and the regular meeting of the board is now adjourned. Thank you.